Twenty fourteen to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, the pledge of allegiance led by Karen McGregor.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the revised agenda?
I'm going to motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and reaching items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Number five, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Number seven is approval of the surplus in-house software and programs as presented by the auditor. Number eight is to declare surplus asset number five six three four, which is an M six fifty tabulator, as surplus for the purpose of transferring ownership, as submitted by the auditor. Number nine is to declare surplus asset number five six three five and number five seven two eight, which are also M six fifty tabulators for the purpose of trade, as submitted by the auditor. And finally, number ten is to declare surplus asset number six zero eight zero, which is a two thousand Chevrolet Suburban, which was due to an accident, as submitted by the Highway Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remove seven and nine, please, for further discussion.
The items seven and nine have been removed from the consent agenda. Any others? If there are no others, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes of items seven and nine.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with items seven and nine removed. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item seven.
Mr. Chair, I just had a question about that, and I'm glad Russ is here. It concerned so many different departments. I was just, I just wanted to make sure this was with your review.
Hi, Russ Tinsvold, IT Director for Pennington County. Yes, we've seen that list, and I understand the concern, but those are the programs as they resided on the old HP mainframe. That machine is gone. All of these programs have been replaced on the new system. So this is just getting rid of the software. The machine is already gone.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions about item nine while Russ is here?
One other question on that. Item seven, is all the data that was associated with these programs been captured and put on our new system, so we're not going to be scrambling to try to pull off and not have the software program to get it pulled off?
Sure. So I think we're done with the scrambling. So we had moved it all off. It turned out that there was one data set that was originally not slated to be moved over, but it has since been moved over. At this point, we're not aware of anything at all that we need off of that, and to be perfectly honest with you, if that information suddenly arises that there's something we forgot, we're probably past that point.
Okay.
I have one question, too. Are these just programs, or is there information there, and are they going to be all destroyed so that information doesn't go anywhere else?
So, so, these are the programs, and the information was moved over with the programs, but the data resides on backup tapes that are still in our office, and we are working on a plan to destroy those, either have them shredded, or incinerated, or something.
Good. Any further comments? If not, do we have a motion on item seven?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the surplusing of the in-house software and programs as listed.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item nine.
With item nine, I was, I'm curious what the value is, or the estimated value, or listed value of these items.
The one that we're surplusing.
You are.
Pardon me?
You are.
Julie Pearson.
You.
And you are?
I don't know yet.
I'll take that under consideration. The one scanner, what we did when we were purchasing, going out for, well, we didn't even have to go out for bid on the eight-fifties, they're the only voting tabulation equipment that we can use in the state of South Dakota. These are the next version. The, before we did this, we contacted ESNS to see what they would offer for trade-in, and they're seventy-five hundred dollars apiece. The one that is going to Kingsbury County for a backup, because it was bought with the Help America Vote Act grant funds, we cannot sell that to them. So they are the only one taking it. We thought that was a better use of the grant dollars to forward it to another county, however, everybody else is going to the eight-fifties. There's probably going to be another twenty of the eight-fifties used in the November election. One of the ones we're trading in is eleven, so I wouldn't have given it to anybody anyway.
All right, thank you.
But that's about, that's, that's all we could get out of them.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to declare surplus asset five six three five and five seven two eight, M six fifty tabulators, for the purpose of trade.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item is item eleven, and as you recall, we had a presentation at our last meeting relative to the piece law land being taken into trust by the Department of Interior. And the purpose of this item on the agenda today is to ask the Commission and anyone else to identify areas of concern that may exist relative to county government and the relationship to this land and its operation, so that when and if the process begins in a formal manner and we are asked to respond, we at least have time to do some research and establish our position relative to that action. So does anyone have any comments they wish to make? Anyone in the audience as well, any public officials?
Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff.
Mark Vargo, State's Attorney.
Go ahead, Mark.
Among the issues that I think that we'd heard, there was some question about, I'd like to at least let you know kind of some of the ground rules. Once the land is taken into trust as a reservation land, we would have no control over it whatsoever, which means that our extradition process, for instance, would be exactly the same that it is with any other tribal entity. It would be complicated, obviously, by the fact that this is going to be run, as I understand it, by a consortium of tribes. And so we don't know what their day-to-day governing body would be, or even really, at this point, who we would ask if we wanted to, say, extradite somebody who had decided to take up residence and intent on the land. Obviously, it's undeveloped, and so there would be some hope that it wouldn't be all that frequent an occurrence, but it would essentially create a circumstance where the sheriff's jurisdiction ended at the border. Similarly, any county ordinances, zoning, those sorts of things would be entirely outside of this board's jurisdiction at that point. So our legal authority would be no different than if this piece of land, which was at the edge of the county, was somehow annexed by another county, or annexed by a tribal organization in any other manner.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add to that, like the State's Attorney said, you know, we do give up all civil and criminal jurisdiction, if I understand it correctly, and it's a question, I guess, for the folks that are making the request. And we've been working with our congressional delegation since about the first of the year, trying to sort out extraditions from, you know, reservations, you know, back to Pennington County, and we have active Pennington County warrants. And frankly, after almost nine months of trying, we've had zero success. One case goes back eleven years for a vehicular manslaughter that occurred in Pennington County, and the suspect, or the person the warrant's for, resides on the Cheyenne River Indian Reservation, and for eleven years, Pennington County's been trying to extradite that person back here to hold them accountable, and frankly, give justice to the victim and their families, and we've been unsuccessful for eleven years. And if this, if making this move creates that same environment within Pennington County, then I would be opposed to it. And I also have concerns about, there's two roads that go through there, and I guess one of the questions I would have is, what happens to those? Do those easements remain, or do we lose access on those roads as well, and again, creating what I feel is a public safety concern?
Mr. Ron Lilly.
I think in some states, the tribes have agreed to state jurisdiction in the state And I guess one of the questions could be presented to these folks is, is it possible, if they're going to put this land into trust, tribal trust, that they sign whatever federal agreements or state agreements there are, that they come under all of the same rules and regulations of any other citizen living in Pennington County?
The reference that I think you're making is to PL two eighty states. Those are states where the tribe and the state have concurrent jurisdiction over tribal lands. Oklahoma, most of Washington, and Oregon work that way. Arizona, New Mexico, South Dakota do not work that way, and I guess that's something I would need to look into for you. I am not aware of a process by which we could have a PL two eighty enclave in a state that otherwise has none, but since we have added tribal lands recently, I don't know if that's possible or not. But I'd certainly be willing to research that, or more appropriately, have Jay research that.
Yeah, and maybe if the tribes are interested in taking over the Black Hills, we could get them to agree to put all of South Dakota into their PL two eighty agreement, so that they can live by the same rules the rest of us live by.
That'd be a political question for the Commission.
I'd make that a motion. Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I mean, there is, there is a matter of eighty thousand dollars worth of taxes, of course, but I guess in maybe the overall scheme of things, that's not a lot, but that would be placed on all the other taxpayers in the county. And if I remember right, and I don't think I was here at the time, we had a example of what happens when a tribe takes over some land not too far from Rapid City, and I don't think that turned out very well for any of us, and I'm not sure about this either.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I question the business with law enforcement also, and I think that's a big question of what we have, because as I see it, the closest law enforcement to that property for any tribe is about a hundred and fifty miles away. So I'm not sure what kind of law enforcement that we'd have, even if the tribe did take it over and provided law enforcement. Another thing is that bothers me considerably is that if, I believe in my own mind, and I'm not an attorney by any means, but that if that property becomes trust land, there could be a casino go up there the next day. And that's the last thing I think I want to see, is another casino in the heart of the Black Hills.
On the first part, I think the problem's exacerbated by the fact, it's my understanding from the presentation last meeting, that the Oglala Sioux Tribe is not actually involved in this. So the nearest tribe participating would actually be Rosebud, and is even further away. So on day-to-day operations and on law enforcement, I don't know exactly where we would go. As far as the casino, there is still a process that has to be undergone to put that up, but again, you certainly lose some leverage once you don't have that control.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, and it really may not concern you, but I am concerned we will have main thoroughfares going through that area for our residents to get around. Are we the ones that are going to be responsible for taking care of those highways? We didn't really have that answered for us, and it's something we have to think about, because would that force us to somehow create different ways for residents to get around? I don't know that, and it's a question I would like answered.
And that's, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's one of the questions I raised is, you know, I guess I'd like to know, do those easements still exist if that's all put into trust land? And then, if the easements do exist, I assume the county's still on the hook for maintaining the roads.
Yeah, that's the part. We need to clarify what our financial.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we really need the State's Attorney's Office to look at it, but the map that I have in front of me shows the roads that are not part of the purchase that they made. It wasn't, it's outlined in red as outside of the boundaries of the property, so.
But there are some areas where that's not.
Yeah, I don't know. You're right, there is one area there that is debatable, yeah. I don't know. Good question.
Any other comments or questions? I think we've touched on a number of areas, and perhaps some more will show up as we move forward, and we'll be interacting, I'm sure, in the future on this issue.
Thank you.
Just from where we sit, I'll certainly look into the question of whether or not a joint or concurrent jurisdiction is possible, and then we'll look into the question of the easements. Are there any other areas that you'd like us to start off right now?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry. Is there any? Go ahead.
The time to put, have input into this, I'm not too sure, has almost passed. So I think that's something we ought to look into. I think they were working on this before they approached the Commission two weeks ago. No, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I believe that's, that's what I'm being told, and I understand there's a, they didn't buy the original Reynolds Ranch house property on one side of the road, but they bought twenty-two hundred acres in other locations other than the original ranch. Now, what that means, I'm not exactly sure, whether they can come in and buy that on both sides of the road, you know, at a later date, I don't know. If they bought part of the Linda Kramer property, that's been the thorn in the side of the county for a long time, and she's the lady that lives off there on the road from Rochester to Deerfield, that called me and asked me to do something with dust control, so I did. I got a earmark from, from Congress to, for eleven million dollars to do the road from Rochester to Deerfield, and then she promptly tried to put a stop to it. So I have a little wonder about what's going to happen with our roads.
Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chair, is there, because we are, I mean, eighty-one thousand dollars is a line of tax to us, and is there any way of working out some kind of reimbursable, I mean, maybe they could reimburse us for that, because, I mean, as Ron said, it's definitely going to make a difference to us. We watch every single penny, and we'll be providing services.
And I think this is just the beginning.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just the first time they've went out and bought property, but as long as the gambling casinos continue to provide them revenue, my guess is you're going to see more of these purchases. Whatever, whatever we, whatever gets established on this two thousand twenty-two acres is what, is going to be the precedence to go forward with.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any legalities at all, but maybe there's some precedence in another state.
Closest analogy that I can think of off the top of my head is what the federal government does in terms of.
Hilton.
Exactly. But I don't know that that, I'm not aware of that existing for any tribal entity, and I would.
I checked that.
If we don't owe them money, I would, you know, the offset wouldn't make sense there, so I would doubt it, but.
Mr. Chairman, the last thing for me is, I'm sure you've maybe checked into it, or Jay, who doesn't have much else to do, can check into it, that, you know, are we just spinning our wheels, writing a nice nasty letter and saying we don't want them to, or is there any further legalities we can take to stop it if we decide to do that? Or is it just a, not up to us really, other than an opinion?
I was going to say, I'll chime in here for a minute. The, you know, there's two processes to move land into trust, as I understand it. One is through the Department of Interior, the one is just a straight-out congressional act where they move a piece of ground into trust. Those are the two mechanisms. I think, I think it's critical that the local entities comment, and I think the sooner the better, and, you know, there, there's a second request in Pennington County that wasn't talked about at this meeting, as I understand it, and you should ask the city for clarification, or the tribes, but there's three parcels up at Susand that they want to move into federal trust as well, and that hasn't even been talked about with the county, so I would at least explore that further to see if that is in fact part of a second request or not.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I was told by some congressional folks that we should make contact as soon as possible, and to write a letter to the President, to the Interior Department, the Attorney General of the United States, Attorney General of South Dakota, and, and others, but just the whole list of them, and get it done right as soon as possible.
Listening to this dialogue, I'm wondering if someone would take the responsibility of referring to these meeting minutes and draft a letter. Excuse me, draft a letter that could be forwarded, considered by the Commission and at a later date, forwarded to the appropriate parties.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman, and I think, I just got a nod from Holly that she'd be more than happy to take that job on, and my motion would be for her to draft a letter for us along the lines of what we've discussed today.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not, thank you, gentlemen, and all in favor of the motion say aye. Excuse me.
I was just wondering if I could give a little bit more input. The home place, the ranch, is now being sold to the tribe. So that also is going to be part of this probably eventually, and it's four hundred and some acres, so will take up all of the Reynolds residence area.
I know who you are, but for the purpose.
Oh, excuse me, I'm Pam Frink. Yeah, excuse me.
Thank you.
So just another, there is more on the horizon.
Well, this thing is not a big move, because they're having an auction to sell all the personal property off the place on the twentieth, I believe it is, this September.
Correct, yes, and that will be so that they can vacate the ranch.
Thank you.
And they, and as I mentioned before, they bought some of Linda Kramer's property, and I think that joins it on the south, so they're lining that whole thing up along, on that, both sides of the road.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Did we vote on it?
Not yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, next item is item twelve. Items from the auditor.
Should I save you some time?
I'd love it, Ken.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license transfers, item twelve A and B, as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item C.
This is the, excuse me, the public hearing for the budget supplement for the Health and Human Services, CDBG, grant. The amount is eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from non-budgeted grant revenue received in the current year for expenditure. This does fit under the, fit within the motion the board made for budgeting, and any unexpected revenue creating an unexpected expense be supplemented, and that was the basis of the grant application that the board authorized signature on.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the general fund, HHS, CDBG, budget supplement in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from non-budgeted grant revenues received in the current year.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion from anyone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is items from the sheriff.
Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. Just wanted to give you an update on our Adam Street facility, and I did brief the Building Committee, and then also our City County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board regarding some changes we want to make with the Adam Street facility, and our goal is to close it on October third of this year, at least move our programs out of there by October third. And a couple of things are driving that. One is, we're about a hundred thousand dollars upside down in the budget there this year, which we'll have to, you know, backfill with other parts of the sheriff's office at the end of the year. Hopefully, we have revenues in other areas that'll be able to do that. And the recent rainstorms have exasperated, exasperated the problems there. They've had rivers of water running through the facility, and talking to buildings and grounds, it's old and it's tired, the building is, and, you know, it isn't worth sticking the money into the seal, the roof that'd be required, and the interior changes that need to be made, so we just feel it's best to relocate those programs, and what we'll do is move part of the programs over to La Crosse Street, and then part of the programs, we're in the process of getting approval through the Department of Corrections, because it takes their approval, as they're the compliance monitor for the state, but we want to move the female population out to the Juvenile Services Center, where we have some open pods out there, which actually would increase our female capacity from twenty-two females to twenty-eight, so that's a plus, because that's a gap in service in this community in terms of the females. The male population will move over to La Crosse Street, but we're still going to displace probably fourteen, fifteen people, males, that we have in the facility now, which is going to require our state and federal partners to find other alternatives, whether that's the community alternatives of the Black Hills and South Seventy-Nine, or other programs, they're going to have to sort that out. And I have to tell you, we've been talking to our state and federal partners for the last eighteen months, almost two years, you know, our population has declined up there because there's more emphasis on outpatient services and inpatient, which, you know, maybe in and of itself isn't necessarily a bad thing, but it, we lose some economies of scale when it comes to running the facility. So, I mean, the ideal scenario is someday that we get all of our programs under one roof, and that's a discussion we've had with the Building Committee, and that's how we get our truest efficiencies, because we're still going to be split. We'll have, you know, temporarily, females out at the Juvenile Services Center, and then males over at La Crosse Street, but those all need to be under, you know, one roof for maximum efficiencies going forward. And what that means in terms of staffing, it does require us to lay off ten staff, and we are looking to place them in other divisions within the sheriff's office in terms of open positions that we have, or that we're anticipating, so we're working with those ten folks to figure out, you know, where we can find them, other employment, if they're interested in, you know, maintaining employment, you know, within the sheriff's office. And then in terms of, I know, you know, the budget's on the agenda today, and I guess my request is, I don't want to, I just should not open Pandora's Box with the budget, because there's too many unknowns, and, you know, the Adam Street facility is supported by, you know, revenue, so, you know, revenues in, revenues out, independent of tax support. Again, with the exception of this year, we're going to have to find some additional support for it within our budget, but there's just too many unknowns with the move and the transition, and. And next year, come budget time, I think we'll have a good handle on where are we going with the programs that were formerly at the Adam Street facility. So with that, I'd certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Kevin, just a clarification on, on moving the females out at the Juvenile Services Center, and you've talked to me about this, but just for everybody else, you're going to have to do a little bit of sidewalk work, but creating a separate entrance, so they'll be sight and sound separated from the adult females with the juvenile population.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the, it's a good clarification, thank you. We've been working with Buildings and Grounds. We need to add a sidewalk off that west door, some minimal amount of fencing, because by law, state and federal law, they have to be sight, sound, separated from juveniles. And to have a co-located facility, again, Department of Corrections has to approve that because they're the compliance monitor for juveniles for the state. And there are several other co-located facilities, you know, within the state, so it's not uncommon, but you have to follow really strict rules on sight, sound separation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff, what, what's the plan for the Adam Street facility once it's terminated for use for the county?
Yeah, well, we want to get our, our people out there by October 3rd, and we want to work with Buildings and Grounds and cannibalize some cameras and other stuff out of there, but then it comes back to your plate, frankly, and you can decide to, I guess, repurpose it, surplus it, and sell it. So those are, as I understand it, probably your two options.
Okay, there isn't anybody that's asking up front to, to do something with it, or any, the city or anybody interested, or said anything, or?
I've heard a couple of comments that it should be leveled and make it a parking lot for the Civic Center, but that's between you and the city, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, move on to item B.
Okay, thank you. And you should have this memo that's enclosed. It's kind of a timeline that the chief and I had prepared. It's for Public Safety Building Renovation Projects, 2014, 2015. Obviously, that building has seen a lot of changes over the years, and some fairly recent, frankly. But with the dispatch moving out and the state's attorney moving out, we'll, you know, repurpose their space for the police department and sheriff's office, and gives us some long-term growth and some breathing space that we need currently. And I, I'm not going to go through the whole thing in its entirety, it's fairly comprehensive, but we did present this to the building committee, and the building committee asked that we come to the commission and give them an update as well. You know, the most critical thing this year, and we've been working with Mike and Mike from Buildings and Grounds and with Gene Fennell as an architect to help us see if our ideas make sense, but to do some minor renovations up on the fourth floor, then we'll move our police department, sheriff's office administration up to fourth floor, and try and get that accomplished yet this year. And then third floor would stay largely unchanged. Second floor kind of becomes our training floor, and then police department records and a couple of their functions, administrative functions will move up there. The Internet Crimes Against Children unit will move over in that west wing above the old jail. And then first floor sees fairly comprehensive changes where that becomes entirely a sheriff's office floor, if you will, with warrants and civil in our patrol division. And the basement will have some changes, fairly significant, and that'll be just the police department's patrol division. And again, our patrol divisions have kind of outgrown the spaces that they're in, so this allows us to each have space. And we've identified in here kind of, you know, where the parking would be, you know, the cost that, our joint space will be split 50/50. If it's primarily our, our space, like on first floor, that'd be a county responsibility because primarily the basement where it's a city expense, you know, they'd be responsible for that cost. And like I say, the only thing this year would be the, the fourth floor, and the rest of these would occur hopefully by the end of 2015 is the timeline we kind of laid out, so let's have a quick overview.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you guys know best what you want over there, and it is fairly comprehensive, except for one thing. What's this going to cost, and where's the money going to come from?
This year, the, the money will come out of city-county funds, who both have funds available that we can use for the fourth floor renovation. As far as the changes on the, in 2015, the police department has identified a, a funding source, I'm not sure what it is, but for ours, it's going to depend on the cost. If it's something we can absorb, we'll absorb it. If it's something more than we can absorb within our budget, I want to leave it open to be able to come back to the building committee and work with them on some funding. But we've tried to do it as efficiently as possible with a minimal amount of changes so we can keep the cost down.
Thanks, Chair.
Kevin, if you could just touch on the parking, I know that you, you've talked about securing the top floor, the parking ramp for law enforcement and other county vehicles, and so if you could just touch on that a minute.
Yes, good point. And one of the last bullet points under parking, we talked about making that top floor the parking ramp secure parking, like with a gate for law enforcement. At the building committee, they recommended that we also reach out to the other county departments, which I just haven't done yet, but we will reach out and see how many county-owned vehicles they have that they would like to get in that secure parking. It does two things. One, you always know where the vehicle's at when you go to look for it, and two, it does keep it in a secure area. And three, in looking at, you know, the numbers and the use on the ramp, we, we don't feel we're going to be taking spaces away from the public because we don't think it's going to be used anyway.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay. We're ahead of schedule. Our next item is 10:00 AM, consideration of the budget. Does the commission wish to jump over item 14 and consider other items? Item 14, items from the treasurer.
Good morning, Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. Before you, you have the resolution that I spoke to you about as far as accepting monthly electronic, electronic payments for the real estate taxes. The resolution reads, whereas SDCL 1021 7.1 allows for 10 equal monthly installment payments of property taxes and authorizes the county commission to establish criteria for such payments, now therefore, be it resolved that the Pennington County Commissioners does hereby authorize the payment of property taxes under the following established criteria. Number one, no one may sign up for the program for a parcel that has existing delinquent taxes. Number two, only real estate and buildings on leased site parcels may be included. This does not include registered mobile homes or public utilities. Number three, individuals that sign up for the program are continued from one year to the next unless they notify the treasurer's office. Number four, if electronic payments are returned for non-sufficient funds, the taxpayers are dropped from the program. Their money that was currently paid will be refunded to them, and they will be barred from re-entering the program for that year. Number five, taxpayers may only drop out of the program after the first or second half payment has been made or if their property is sold. It is the taxpayer's responsibility to notify the treasurer's office if a taxpayer wishes to discontinue the program or if their property is being sold. So I need a motion for the chair to sign the resolution to become effective for taxes in 2015, 2014 taxes payable in 2015.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
10 equal monthly installment payments, so when would they be? Are everybody on the same schedule?
Yes, and we are working with the bank now. We can, that can be done through our office because of the CEO portals that we have in our office. We can send the, the payments to the bank on a monthly basis, and the bank in turn will draw it from the customer's account and remit it to the county.
So, but with 10 instead of 12?
It, everything's going to be paid the fifth of the month. So they will start making their first payment in January, and they will make their last payment by law by the 3rd of May without any interest.
No.
And that's in state statute.
By November, isn't it?
The first half, the first half.
Okay, but the front.
And the second half will be the same.
So, so you have to stop, like, since it's due the 1st of May, they won't have one due in May?
Right, they will make a payment January, February, March, April, and the first part of May.
Okay, okay.
Still don't get it, but.
All your taxes have to be paid by the 1st of November.
Yeah. By the 1st of, by April 30th and by October 31st.
Yeah, so you have to collect it before.
But we have a lot of requests from people that are delinquent on their taxes that can't save money, that want this program, wants, want us to implement this program. So we would like to try it. It's not going to cost the county anything.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the establishment of monthly electronic payments of real estate taxes.
Second. Do you want to authorize my signature or not?
I sure do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 16.
Morning Commissioners, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. The first, first thing on the agenda under items from equalization is introduction of Gordon Wendell as Deputy Director of Equalization. We did interviews. Gordon has now just started his job. This is a formal introduction, but I think all of the commissioners know who he is. Just for your information, his background, he's worked for Pennington County as an appraiser for approximately six years, some jobs prior to Pennington County, but he also has seven years' experience in a private mass appraisal company in South Dakota. He worked in seven counties across South Dakota. That's his professional experience. Happy to have him as deputy, and he's already doing a good job. And this, this is the formal introduction. You'll probably see him again at some point. Hopefully, maybe someday I can skip a commission meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
You know, I had a little trouble recognizing, I'd never seen him in a suit before.
I'll get to tie you off as soon as I can.
You do look pretty sharp.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item B, Donald and Shirley Kuderna.
This is an abatement request that was brought to you by the property owner, postponed from last meeting till now. You have some information from myself and I think from Jay Alderman, and I'll, I'll answer questions. Otherwise, the property owner might have something to say.
Shirley, or Don, do you wish to address the commission?
Shirley Kuderna.
Don Kuderna.
And I think you all have received a copy of the email that I answered that Holly had sent out. I had made comments on that. And my printer's not talking to my computer, so I didn't have copies to bring to you today.
You're talking about this, this form?
No, there should have been an email Holly sent to me with the decision on the state's attorney's office.
It was after the hack, it didn't.
It came on your computer at home.
Okay.
That one that you used all the time?
I'm not a computer person, so. Okay, if you want to go ahead and comment on?
In essence, we are asking that you consider the fact that we may have gone in, like we said, and filled out the proper paperwork, but it was misplaced in the office instead of being recorded. And we're asking that you believe us that we have been and done this application.
As I recall, you were, you were in the office more than once.
Oh, we were in the office several times. Actually, we were in the office even before we took our plans down to Connects and had them, work on them, our building plans. So, I mean, we were there asking questions on how to reduce our taxes and what would make our taxes more, because I did a design on the house. So we were, I mean, we were in that office several times. And we had been in the office because we had received a letter telling us to get our owner occupied, but being as we didn't move in until April of 2013, we weren't allowed to fill out the paperwork before that. We had missed that deadline. So we went in, and I believe it would have been January of this year, and we've, at that time, filled out the paperwork. Because, do you know, sometimes you have in the back of your mind these things that need to be done? Well, that was not there in my mind, and it would have been. We, we felt until we got our tax notices and it listed that we were not owner occupied, we were totally felt that we had everything taken care of. And it would have been on my mind to do, even though we had just moved into the house, it would have been on that, my agenda would have been done. So I, and sometime in January, and I'm thinking it could have been during the stock show, if there was a timeline that they need, the paperwork was filled out. But that's, being as we didn't have a copy of it from the office, we didn't request a copy, you just have to believe that we did that. But thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions by the commission?
I, I guess I'd just make a, a comment. Without the, without the actual copy of the application, it, it makes it very, very difficult, or frankly, impossible, if, if I read our state's, our deputy state's attorney's email, it would make it impossible for us to authorize this. It doesn't necessarily mean that we don't believe that you went in, but without that kind of documented evidence, you know, I think our hands are tied.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, in your, in your email, you talk about two pieces of property, this, this is in addition to this, this issue, but two pieces of property that there was an error in recording?
Correct. We have two pieces of property, an 80 acres and 110 acres. The 110 acres is where all the buildings are, and they, that was recorded properly here at the courthouse. My husband's uncle is, Tony is 98, and he had done a quitclaim deed.
On the 80 acres.
On, on 80 acres and 110, but there's two parcels. He had done the quitclaim deed on all of it, and we had the paperwork. They had a copy of the quitclaim deed here at the courthouse, so all we had to do is get a copy of it and take it over to equalization, and they were able to amend that. They had just not recorded the 80 acres. They had only recorded one of the parcels. But both parcels were included in the quitclaim. So that's my point. Things sometimes are missed. There are mistakes made.
So is, is your property recorded now in the?
It is correctly recorded. Is that correct? You did tell me it's correctly recorded. It has been corrected.
And so how will that translate in terms of taxes and the tax differential between owner occupied and non-owner occupied?
I don't think the 80 acres is under concern on owner occupied because it has no buildings on it.
Doesn't matter at all, has no impact. And in, and in fact, the mistake in recording the ownership was, was just temporary and it's been fixed, and it wouldn't have had an impact anyways. Different parcel.
But what about the house? Now, it, it was taxed for how long as non-owner occupied?
The new house?
Yeah.
It, it has always been non-owner occupied, but it's a new house.
Well, but, so one year, year and a half, what, what's the timeframe?
The, the construction on the new house began in 2012. The, the first assessment date that the property could qualify for the owner occupied classification was the 2014 assessment. So even though the house existed before, it wasn't occupied, it was under construction, so it couldn't qualify. 2014 is the first year it could, and it was non-owner occupied. So, short answer to your question, one year.
So the differential in actual tax costs will be a? So, the differential in actual tax costs will be a one-year situation?
Yes.
But it is properly recorded now?
That's a different parcel. Not, uh, not the property under consideration of the abatement here.
No, we will have to wait until the next opportunity to file as owner occupied, and that will be in November. We will have to go in at that time and file, within the time allowed.
Why can't you do it today?
I guess you'll have to ask.
Because the law states that you owned and occupied the property on November first. You can't, you can't make that statement in September, because November first is, isn't here yet.
We tried to do owner occupied after we moved in, but we didn't move in till April twenty-fourth, and they would not allow us to fill out paperwork until the November through March time that they allow.
Thank you. Okay, what's your wish?
Can make a motion to deny the, um, abatement, um, based upon the State's Attorney's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to deny the request for an abatement. Um, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to hear from our Assistant State's Attorney, uh, in public about that, so everybody out there knows what's going on.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Um, just for clarification, what's your specific question?
Just for clarification, I want to hear what your opinion is of denying or, or accepting the abatement.
But, you know, factually, um, I, I don't have an opinion, because I, I don't know, was there an application filled out? Was there not an application? There's no way for me to possibly answer that for you. Legally, the statute is pretty clear. There has to be an application filed no later than March fifteenth of the year of the assessment for which you're wanting the classification to apply. In this particular case, there had to be owner occupied as of November one of twenty thirteen for the twenty fourteen taxes payable in twenty fifteen. No app, and, and the application for that timeframe has to happen somewhere between November one of thirteen and March fifteenth of fourteen. There's no application of record. Based on that, legally then, I gave the opinion that there's no application to act on that's of file, of record. I've not seen one. With that, I don't know how to answer it other than the law says you have to apply, and you apply through an application, and once you have that application, you review it to determine if it qualifies. Then you either get it or you don't. So, the paperwork does not exist to carry out the process of determining whether or not owner occupied status is available for the twenty, twenty fourteen assessment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm kind of inclined to believe that, uh, the, the applicants. But I also have to find what, what it fits on the abatement, and does it fit? I mean, I guess I'm looking at an error has been made in any identifying entry or description of the real property. Perhaps on the records, if it, if they should have had owner occupied, maybe that is an error in, in identifying entry. I know you've read this as many times, or more than I have, and, and there are some specific cases that tell you what each one of these things mean. And am I off base on that?
I don't, I don't know of any exception, uh, because you have a deadline. And the deadline on their owner occupied is March fifteenth. So, I don't, I don't think you can miss a deadline and then come back and see...
And abate it.
Redress under the abatement statutes. I think that's, that's the real glitch here, is that there's an actual literal deadline.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I, we've run into this many times, that we'd like to do something here, but the state legislature has decided what the county commission can do and what they can't do. In fact, they, they've decided what you can do, and if you can't do it, if it fits into the other, no, you can't do it. I'm afraid this might lead into that.
A, a good example of kind of where you were heading Commissioner Beskwood is if an application had been filed, and the otherwise met everything they needed to, to, to have the owner occupied classification, yet it got put down as non-owner occupied. There, you can come back through the abatement process logically and legally, because you met the deadline, the application was in, factually, you had everything in place you needed. It was, it was basically a clerical error as to how it was classified. Then you redress that through, uh, an abatement. But we don't have that key piece, and that is the application.
Well, and, and likewise, if, 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 and I tend to believe the taxpayers as well, but barring any physical evidence that would support that, uh, I, I find it hard to, to reach out there and, and, and approve this. But likewise, if, if they came in and they had a copy of this, um, and it was, um, notarized, uh, with the proper dates, and the equalization's office lost it, then I, I, you know, I, I would feel a little bit more comfortable in, in taking that information.
That'd be automatic. I think standing there telling you, of course, you got to do it.
Yeah.
No question about it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What if some miracle happened?
I think the mic's wrong.
And they, uh, either equalization office or the Kuderness go, oh, my gosh, here's, here's the, um, application. If we turn it down today, is there any possibility of them coming back, or is this it?
Absolutely, they could come back.
Okay.
I suppose one way to deal with it is you could rescind your motion. If you were going to take a motion today to deny, you could rescind that based on the new information that none of us have available today. It would make logical sense that if that new information came up, that'd be something to consider. And so, you could redress it, uh, in that, in that manner. You could bring it back up, rescind, and then do a motion to, uh, approve an abatement, and then make the correction.
Any other comments?
I have one more question. Has this never happened before?
Um...
In your office?
I'm getting it.
Has it never happened that somebody has said you lost their paperwork?
Yes, it's happened. Uh, I don't know of a time where, uh, the commission has, uh, where, where we have found that we have lost something, and the commission has acted on that, though. But, uh, it has been suggested many times that we have lost owner occupied applications.
Okay.
Any other comments? Not, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Beskwood?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
No. The motion carried.
Thank you for your time, and I do understand.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is item D. Or item C, excuse me.
Item C is a, an abatement request that was brought to you by my office and the Treasurer's Office. Really, it was postponed from the last meeting. Uh, it involves abatements on two mobile homes, uh, one owned by Green Tree, one owned by Mountain Shadows. The Mountain Shadows abatement request is for two thousand and twelve and twenty, and twenty thirteen years. Green Tree is for twenty twelve. I've provided the commission an explanation of the situation on those, the information I gathered from the Treasurer's Office. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Fisher-Holloway.
I see on the letter that you wrote that no moving permit is needed when a licensed mobile home mover or dealer moves a trailer.
That's right.
And, and so, that's not, I mean, when you were here two weeks ago, you were saying there was a moving, and that's how you found out about it, because the Treasurer's Office notified you and, uh, so on. So, when a, when a mobile home dealer moves a trailer, how, how does anybody get notified?
Well, sometimes we don't. Uh, we have worked with, uh, Department of Revenue and Department of Motor Vehicles, complained to them. They have, they have called a couple of the dealers that we have problems with when, when we found these problems. We generally find these problems a couple of years later, though. Uh, but the, the dealer is supposed to, and I, I'm not sure if it's in law, uh, or the Department of Motor Vehicles just says they have to, but they are supposed to give us a notification that they've moved something. They might have given Lawrence County that notification, because Lawrence County had those mobile homes on their tax roll. They didn't give us anything. And, and that has happened before. I don't like it. I complain. Uh, sometimes, we just don't get it.
So, we, we don't know if there's a statute that requires them to do this or not, is just, um, if you're a nice guy, notify us?
Well, if it's a statute, I don't know as if it matters anyways, uh...
Well, it does matter. If there is a statute, we can charge them for not following the statute.
Yep, and I have tried, um, but...
Well, you don't know that there's, if there isn't a statute. So, I don't know how you could have tried to charge them.
Well, I don't charge anybody. I have, uh, worked with, uh, Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Revenue, and the Sheriff's Office when we find this out. But it's usually a couple of years later that we find out. The mobile home dealer, in some cases, have said, well, we gave it to you anyways. Uh, it's, it's hard to prove that they didn't give us this document, and it's two years later.
Does, um, Jay, do you know if there's a statute, or does the Treasurer's Office know if there is a statute that requires these dealers to notify us?
I don't know specifically as to a dealer. Um, I know that obviously, uh, at least other than dealers, and I'm just saying this.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to have a permit from the Treasurer, and the whole purpose of the permit is to make sure that taxes are brought current.
Right.
And that we know where you're moving the mobile home to whatever jurisdiction, so they can put it on the tax rolls. As far as a dealer goes, I don't recall off the top of my head specifically if a dealer has the same obligation that you or I would have if we were moving our own personal mobile home.
Well, maybe we need to, uh, look into that, and if, if the dealers don't have to follow the same regulations that an individual does, let's change the statute to require the dealers to have to do the notification.
The dealers are exempted by statute from the moving permit.
But there's a way to change that statute, Shannon.
Yeah, and I, I'd be happy with that.
I will contact, because, um, the dealers are, um, under Motor Vehicles. So, I will contact the Division of Motor Vehicles and bring that answer back to the Commissioners at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion relative to item C?
So, Mr. Chair, I've moved to abate the taxes for the two mobile homes as presented.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Item D.
Item D is an abatement request, uh, for, uh, a mobile home in the name of Paradis. This is a request for, uh, two thousand and twelve and twenty thirteen. Uh, we found that we had a mobile home assessed twice, the same mobile home in two different, uh, ownerships. Uh, the twenty fourteen assessment was corrected at County Board of Equalization. Um, the, this is twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. Uh, we need to delete, uh, one of those assessments. The home is assessed twice.
Did the taxpayer actually pay the taxes twice in those years?
Only on, on one home.
On one.
So, we're, we're deleting the other ones.
So, and, and this showed up because they were delinquent?
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Well, I, I sure wouldn't want to see these people have to pay the taxes twice, because we had an error in the equalization's office. So, I would make a motion to abate these taxes.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is there any paperwork lost in this thing?
Nope.
Checking.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Item E.
Item E is an abatement request, uh, brought to you for the first time. This one comes to you from the property owner, and I, I don't know if the property owner is here or not.
Good morning.
Good morning. Identify yourself, please.
Absolutely. My name is Tammy Eggermeyer, and I thank you very much for hearing me this morning. I jotted down some notes, because public speaking makes me nervous. Um, basically, what it comes down to is, we became property owners for the first time in six years ago, and, um, just recently discovered that our property had been misassessed for the entire time after its construction. Um, our, our home is located at six three two four Cog Hill Lane. It was among the first handful of those, um, homes built in Phase Two of the Red Rock Meadows subdivision. Um, because we were in a new neighborhood, we were unable to get a true depiction of the resale value of our home. It wasn't until this past year, when comparable houses in our vicinity were being put up for sale, that we came to the realization that we cannot sell our home for what it was being assessed at. Um, in other words, until now, we were unable to meet the requirements or rules set forth by the County Board of Equalization under Property Owners' Rights and Duties, which instructs a homeowner to ask yourself, if you sold your property, is this the amount you could expect to receive? Upon realizing the difference of property assessment and sale value in our home, we contacted the Pennington County Department of Equalization and ultimately completed an objection to real property assessment. An inspector came to our home and found that our property had been erroneously, erroneously assessed in the following ways. We were assessed as having a finished basement, eighteen hundred square feet. Um, we were assessed as having a gas fireplace, as having four bedrooms instead of the three, and as having an additional bathroom. Um, our assessed value dropped by thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, we trusted that a fair and true valuation of our property had been conducted, and I do realize that ignorance is, is not really a defense, but ultimately, that's what it was. Being new homeowners, we had no idea that, that we should have verified what our home, what the basis of our home valuation was. Um, as Mr. Holloway quoted earlier, SDCL ten eighteen one, um, stipulates that, um, county commissioners may abate or refund in whole or part the invalid assessment of tax if an error has been made in any identifying entry or description of real property. Um, in six years, we've paid more than twenty-five thousand dollars in property taxes, and I do believe wholeheartedly in paying our fair share, but we've gone above and beyond. Now, I know the past is the past, and that can't be amended, but what I am asking is that our tax, our property tax be revised for this year, the payments that are required for us to make this year based on last year's valuation. Um, do you have any questions?
So, so what you're looking for is twenty thirteen payable and twenty fourteen?
Correct, because now we're sitting in a home and paying excessive property tax knowingly this year.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from, um, Shannon. What's your response to this?
The issue in this abatement is, uh, an issue of overvaluation that should have been appealed through boards, uh, County Board of Equalization. Uh, I, um, I've talked with the property owner and explained this. I put together something for the commission about, uh, abatement requests, and, uh, Ron alluded to some, uh, cases and Attorney General's opinions. I put together a document that summarizes all of those in cooperation with Jay. There's actually, uh, an Attorney General's opinion or two that deal directly with circumstances like this. This is not an error in entry. Uh, the, the assessed value that was placed on the property was intended to be... and Ron alluded to some cases and Attorney General's opinions. I put together a document that summarizes all of those in cooperation with Jay. There's actually an Attorney General's opinion or two that deal directly with circumstances like this. This is not an error in entry. The, the assessed value that was placed on the property was intended to be the assessment. The, the fact that there's some property data that's incorrect, not relevant to the abatement statute. The property owner received an assessment notice with an assessment, and it should have been appealed.
I, I don't disagree with that. Shannon was very, very kind when I came to him with my multiple questions, and I wasn't in a pleasant mood, and I appreciate his, his patience with me. However, when I asked him what measurement, what, what, how our home was assessed initially, he said basically that measurements of our home had been done and that assumptions had been made based on our neighborhood. And I don't think that our home should be based on, the value of our home should be based on assumptions.
Unfortunately, I think that's how all of our values are assessed in Pennington County, is based on assumptions.
Well, perhaps that should change.
Yeah, I would agree.
Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Chair, oddly enough, I, I, within the last few years, have had a similar situation, and my trace back to how it was ever originally started was the builder of my home. The builder said they were going to do this. It was registered that way, and then there was less square footage than what was registered. So, I, I didn't have a recourse until they came out and they looked at the home, and, and, and I understand what you're going through. I want you to get that. But, but I also knew, I, I couldn't go back and change what had happened in the past to get a refund or anything like that. But from that year going forward, it can be, it can be changed because they came out, they looked at it, and found out what was really there. So, I, I, it's, it's very frustrating when you, as a homeowner, take on some of that responsibility. I certainly did not handle my responsibility. I just didn't get that I didn't have that kind of square footage, for some reason.
But common sense lends itself to, we've paid above and beyond for...
So did I.
X amount of years. I just don't want to have to pay above and beyond this year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It looks to me like, don't correct me if I'm wrong, that this lady appealed her value to the city of Rapid City in, whenever it was, March, and they granted her a reduction. Did, did the county board, I take it, put it back up again?
No.
Well, how did it get back up again?
The abatement request is for 2013. The appeal was for the 2014 assessment.
That's this year.
The, the abatement request is for last year.
So, what we're saying is we were wrong, but we're not going to change it.
It was not appealed last year.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of things, heard a lot of things here this morning about how we should get the legislature to change something, and that's like running into the wind carrying a barn door. But something needs to be done with this, and how we get it done, I don't know. But you can go down and talk taxes to the state legislature, and their eyes fog over. I don't think they know any more about taxes than we do. And how to change them, you, you can't really even talk to them about it. And we've been pushing the farm ranch issue of what's fair for people that are wanting to be ag. And we just get shot in the foot every time we talk to them about it. So, I don't know just what to do, but we do need to do something.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I, I've always been a stickler, and we've got to do what we legally can do. I mean, that's, the legislature has said that. But something does have to be done. Maybe we need to make a stand, so I'm going to make a motion to grant the abatement.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It looks like if there's an error has been made in any identifying entry or description of the real property, then that, that you can abate on that. Would you agree that there's an error on this?
No.
So, there wasn't an error. She's got, where she says she's got, she was assessed for a finished basement and it's unfinished, that's not an error?
No. The, the law says an error...
The fact that there's no fireplace, that's not an error?
The law says that there's an error in the identifying entry of the property or the description. There are Attorney General's opinions...
Shannon, isn't that a description of the property?
Not according to the Attorney General.
But that's a, it's a description that you use in assessing the property, putting the value on the property.
The assessment notice goes out with an assessed value, a legal description, and property owner's name, and that is what the, the law refers to, not the, the property details.
Do, do you use whether or not a basement is finished, whether it has a fireplace, whether it has four bedrooms and extra half bath? Do you use that to help set the value on that house?
Yep, that's our notes in our office.
So, isn't that an error in setting the value when you have erroneous information on the assessment criteria that you're placing?
No, because the information we had at the time was the, was the best that we knew, and the value that was placed on the property was what we intended it to be. The, the error comes when we...
It's the best information you had at the time, but it was an error. It was erroneous. Was it true? That's what an error is, something that's not true.
And I know what, I know what the case law says. It says it's got to be a clerical error. When you say that you've got a finished basement, and there isn't one, to me, that's a clerical error. I know you, I know you probably couldn't get into the house, so you make assumptions. I, I, and sometimes assumptions are wrong.
There was a situation that was brought to the Attorney General where property owner took out a building permit to add an addition on to his house, then did not build it. But the county assessor added that addition to his information and increased the value of the property, the assessment. The Attorney General ruled that that was not the clerical error described in state statute.
Ask the cler, ask the Attorney General, who's an attorney's opinion. I'm an opinion, an attorney, and I got a different opinion.
I, I just provide you with the information that I have, and, and that is it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Shannon, where did we get the original information? Did we get it off the building permit, or did we get it by the assessor's office going out and doing assessment of the property?
Well, well, both, but we do always go out and look at the property. Now, of course, we don't get in every property. We leave a card when we're there for the property owner to call us back if we didn't get in. But we go out and we look at the property, we measure everything, and we gather the information from that site visit.
Okay. But what I'm making reference to is that if you had a fire, a gas fireplace on there, then it wasn't there, did that come from the builder, or did that come from your assessment that there's probably one there?
Well, I don't know if the, if the building permit had that information or not. Ultimately, it's that property inspection that, that we rely on.
So, how would we rely on that gas fireplace when we didn't see it?
Well, you can see a, you can see a vent at times. You can, you see some evidence of something there. Commissioner Holloway is right. We rely on assumptions sometimes. If we can't get inside a house, we have to make assumptions that it's typical for the neighborhood.
Okay, we have some other people wanting to speak on this, and we do have a motion and a second, so the discussion should relate to the motion. Shirley, you had a comment?
I do have a comment. In 1978, my first husband and I built a new home on Sage Street, and we got our tax notice, and we disagreed with it, and it took us forever to get anybody out to look at the house physically. All right. The new home that we built, this new home currently, they were out in, at the end of the year in 2012, and of course, it was just, they had just started framing on September 1st, or about the middle of September. So, it was, I think they deemed 35% finished, which is fine, and pretty accurate. When the new assessor was out to my house, and I happened to be home, he did not even want to come into my house, and that would have been in September last year. I had to insist that he come in my house. "No, I don't have to." And I said, "Yes, I want you to," because the last time you were here, we were still being framed. And I said, "I want you to come in. I want you to measure what is not completed," because we have a completed basement, almost completed basement in the house. And I said, "I want you to come in." I'm not kidding you. I had to argue with him. And I was there, and he did not want to come in, but I did make him come in. And sometimes, and I'm sorry, we have to read those tax notices and fight them when it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
But I agree that it's... Shannon?
What do you do?
Everybody makes mistakes.
If we do it, then...
No card was ever left at my home by an assessor.
Okay, Julie?
Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. If the board approves an abatement that is viewed as against state statute, I would have to seek legal advice from our state's attorney's office before I would put that on the books. So, there's a double protection to the law in that effect.
Thank you. Janet?
Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer, and I have to agree with Julie because if it's approved by the board, and it's not a legal abatement, that makes me liable, and I'm not going to pay somebody else's taxes, so it would go back on the board, just so you know.
Equally?
Jay?
Against the words or against it?
Jay, under 1018-1, it says, number two item, "If improvements on any real property are considered or included in the valuation of the real property, which did not exist on the real property at the time fixed by law for making the assessment."
Improvements would be structures, standalone structures. It wouldn't be...
Wouldn't be a finished basement?
...a fireplace, or, that's my understanding. And Shannon, God bless him, because he's just sharing with you what the Attorney General has given in a series of opinions over, what, 40 years or 50 years. I, as I stand here, I've looked at that 1018-1-1, the clerical error. Being a human being, my first impression is, well, clerical error is anything that's a mistake. The AG says a clerical error is where it's obvious you did not intend to put what you did. I think there was hogs that were listed at $5,000 apiece instead of $52. There's other things that are into, you know, $200,000 instead of 200. I mean, obvious clerical errors, but where you intend to assess a property, the AG says, it's not our Supreme Court, it's where the AG has opined on this. Where you intend to assess a property, and you intend that it has these features, and you intend to give it this value, that is up to the homeowner to look at that when they get their assessment notice and say, "That seems high to me, maybe right, maybe wrong. I'm going to make a phone call to the equalization department, explain this to me." If that individual does not like the explanation they received from Shannon, then they obviously have to meet the appeal deadline and bring it to the city if the property's inside city limits, eventually to the county, OHE, Circuit Court, Supreme Court. That, that's what the AG has given us. So, the reference today is that, you know, I, I, we wouldn't pay an illegal abatement. Right now, the law we have on this is from the Attorney General. I, I don't stand before you telling you that I have something more supreme than the Attorney General's opinion on this matter. So, I wish I could tell you more, but what Shannon has relayed to you today is, in fact, what he has read, what I have read. It's the best information from a higher source than us that we can go on. He's not pulling your leg. He's not making this up. That's, that's the way it is.
But, but I guess, I, I can't imagine that an assessor would, would want to put down that he, that the basement was finished, that there was a fireplace, that there was an extra bedroom, and an extra half bath, that he would want to put that down if he knew it wasn't there. So, it would seem that that's an error in, in, in his, carrying out his duties, whoever it was that put that down.
Did he, did he say he knew it wasn't there?
Well, I don't, no. He didn't say he knew it wasn't there, but, but the fact that he put it down when it wasn't there, he, if he knew it wasn't there, he wouldn't want to put it down that way, would he?
But I'm going to go back to, perhaps the building permit had something totally different, and that's what we started with, because that is what we started with, and that was my personal experience, is that the builder got the permit, said he was going to build this, but by the time he got done, for whatever reasons, the way it was located on the lot, whatever, that changed. But he didn't change it, so the equalization office went with the original building permit. And we don't know that that hasn't happened. She has a new home. Mine was like eight years before I discovered I didn't have as much square footage, so, you know.
Like I say, you know, if you, if you granted the abatement today, I don't know who would appeal. And I don't know who's going to tell you that that's illegal. We have an AG opinion, or opinions, that touch on the matter, some more specific than others, that would suggest that this set of facts don't qualify. But that's not a court, and evidence, and Supreme Court making a decision. We all know that Attorney General's opinions aren't the law. They're just to assist us with nothing more to go on with someone who's looked at as having a, some sense of authority and power to give you a good idea of what would happen if a matter like that were to end up in court. That's about as good as it gets. Judges will tell you it's not precedent. So, it sets with you today to decide to either grant this abatement or not, and I can't literally tell you that it's illegal, that a Supreme Court would, if it were appealed, they would disagree with you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Young lady, don't take it personal, no matter how this turns out, because it, it has, as most legal cases evolve, it evolves into a discussion of a much higher principle than what we have in front of us. But, but thank you for bringing it to us because it helps clarify our feelings on certain items. So, it's nothing personal, frankly.
I understand that. One final note, you know, the SDCL should be written so that the common man can interpret them.
So, anybody can...
There's a state senator sitting right there. Look at him and tell him that.
I, I am an educated person, and when it says that the county commissioners may abate a refund in whole and in part, if there's an invalid assessment or tax error, there was an invalid assessment done, period.
In, in this particular matter, I, with the number of things that don't exist, I have to think that it's possible there is a house in the neighborhood that does have those features, and it could have erroneously been duplicated on this tax record.
But wouldn't you agree that that would be an error?
I'm not sure. After, has to ask the Attorney General.
Coming from a former state senator, what would you have to say about that law?
I just did.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with, with an esteemed senator in the audience, I'm sure he would agree that the legis, entire legislature likes local control, and they fight for local control, and I, I believe this is a local control issue, and so I'm ready to vote.
Can I have a clarification on the years? The application says 2008, 2013. Yeah, but it hasn't been changed to 2013.
And if the board is going to grant the abatement, has to come up with a value to abate as well.
Mr. Chair, I think when we vote on this, we have to remember that the auditor and the treasurer are both in agreement with each other. I'm not too sure that I want those two women after me in the courthouse, because I think they'll tell you exactly what they think, and I think they already have. So, I believe we're stretching our neck quite a little bit. But I do agree it needs to be changed.
Mr. Holloway?
And, and I think we do have to determine how much of the taxes in 2000, if we, if this motion would pass, how much of the taxes in 2013 would be abated. And we don't have a dollar figure on that with the differences between the assessment that, that should have been on that property and what, what was assessed in. So, maybe if, if we're going to get to that point, if, if we're, if we're going to vote whether or not to abate the 2013 taxes, that was over, over assessed to this property, we probably need to post...
we probably need to postpone this for two weeks, have the Equalization Office and the Auditor's Office come up with whatever that tax would be, the difference in the taxes.
Are you suggesting a substitute motion, or?
I'm suggesting that, yes, but I don't, since I've been jabbering here, I probably can't make the motion.
Somebody heard you.
I'll say something in the meantime, now you can make the motion.
Okay, I would, I would make a substitute motion to postpone this for two weeks, so we can determine what the over-taxed or over-assessed taxes would be between, if it was assessed with, with the way the property is actually listed. Without the unfinished, with the unfinished basement, no fireplace, delete a bedroom and a half-bath.
Motion in a second?
And, and I don't know, I don't know if that's the, I assume the Equalization Office has to be involved in that, and I assume that the Auditor's Office, is that right, Julie? Okay.
Treasurer? And the State's Attorney?
Now we've got a substitute motion here.
Okay, I only have one comment, that they were able to figure out the assessment with all that added. You would think that Shannon's Office would be able to adjust that assessment according to what they have taxed for those amounts. It shouldn't be left up to the homeowner.
No, he's going to come back.
Shannon should be able to figure out what the difference is. And I agree that they need to be abated. But we do get those tax notices every year, and we should question them. That's why I insisted upon somebody coming into my house.
Okay, any other comments relative to the substitute motion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Some, did someone vote?
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed to the substitute motion? Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item is item F.
I don't think we're breaking the rules. I think the statute...
Any, let's kind of move through that rather quickly. I don't know that we've got any decisions to make today on this, this one, but...
Okay, the Commission asked me to report on unimproved parcels that have an owner-occupied classification. And I told the Commission at a previous meeting that there were three hundred and eight parcels that are, that are unimproved, that have an owner-occupied classification. I've since discovered that fifty-eight of those parcels have mobile homes on them, so they're really not unimproved. Those mobile homes are owner-occupied properties. An additional twelve parcels, I didn't find any, any reason why those properties should be classed as owner-occupied. We sent out a letter to all of those, we're getting lenders back. There's a mobile home, there's a couple of brand-new houses that were built this year, so some of those, the same situation. The remaining two hundred and thirty-eight parcels receive the owner-occupied classification per the administrative rule that we've discussed before. All of these parcels vary in size, from .01 acre to fifty-six acres, with the average about three and a half acres. The average assessment is about forty-two thousand. And then I included for your information that of all of these parcels that are classed as owner-occupied, the tax difference on them amounts to about thirty-nine thousand six hundred. And I, I noted in there also that there is no impact on the Pennington County budget levy or any other taxpayers due to a change from non-owner-occupied to owner-occupied. The, the difference is all in state aid.
Mr. Chairman, that's all well and good, except that's not true. Who do you think pays the state the money it gives to the schools? Our taxpayers, so it might not have the thirty-nine thousand difference, but there is a, there is a difference.
Not, not in property tax, but I am well aware that we all, we all pay taxes in other places to the state.
Shannon, as I was looking over these lists, I noticed that there's, there's several parcels with the same last name on them, and I, I don't know if there's, if there are different family members, or if, if, if all, like, there's one here, this, this individual has three parcels listed, and I assume then they're all unimproved parcels that are attached to an owner-occupied parcel. So can, can, can I have, can I have my house set in on this parcel and then have three other parcels around it, and get them all owner-occupied, is that what that's telling me?
Yes, but there might be some, some family names in here that are duplicated as well. But yes, you could have an owner-occupied parcel and, and, and unimproved parcel on either side.
On both sides?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and get them all connected as owner-occupied?
That's correct. And there are a few situations like that in here.
And, and do, do we have any responsibility to look at those, to see whether or not they really are part of the same yard? Or, or as long as they are connecting, it doesn't make any difference how many acres there are, we can make them owner-occupied?
It doesn't make any difference how many acres there are, but the property has to be principal place of residence. So we do look at them. If, if there was some other activity going on on an adjacent parcel, like a business, the home set on one parcel, a business set on the other one, then even though that one is adjacent, I guess it wouldn't be unimproved, though. So, but, but we do look at that, but when it is unimproved and there is nothing else going on there, it is part of the yard.
So as long as it's under the eighty acres, because if it's over eighty acres, then they'd file for ag status on it, wouldn't they?
They don't have to, because they have to meet the criteria for an ag classification. And that, there, there might be something in here that could, if they met the criteria, be classed as ag, but evidently they don't.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on, and thank you, Shannon. We'll move back to item fourteen. Now ten o'clock, in case, in case you don't know that. This is consideration of the 2015 provisional budget.
This is the time set by statute and by motion of the Board for the public hearing of the 2015 approved provisional budget for annual approval for calendar year 2015. The budget, as approved by the county commissioners for the provisional budget, the only amendment I show to date is a miscalcled on the Rapid City Library contract, which added eleven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. It does not affect the revenue side. So the projected budget would be eighty-six million, two fifty-eight, four sixty-nine, with revenues of forty million, eight fifty-three, nine sixty-three, tax revenues of thirty-six million, five forty-three, three forty, with the use of twelve million, zero forty-five, seven hundred and forty-one... Cash reserves, I'm sorry, I was looking up there and it wasn't up there. The budget document that I have provided for Holly, for your packets, does have that change made in it. However, this document does not have updated utility values or your final value. So upon approval, if you want to approve it today, I would need direction on where you want me to apply that difference. There is a growth in utilities. As you can see in county general, we are not using the difference to our maximum, even with just growth dollars. And I would say with that philosophy that our tax revenue would stay the same, and the difference to the maximum, or the maximum tax amount, would only grow by the growth. But we would still be levying the twenty-eight million, seven oh four, and anything in those columns except for library, which the Board has said you want to apply all available dollars this year. I know, I see on here, I don't know if you want to specifically address the Rapid City Public Library correction. Upon approval of this document, if you make no other changes, it really doesn't need to be addressed. But on the agenda, there is Black Hills Vision, and you would need to ask if there are any other organizations or individuals in the audience that would like to make comment. And then I will take Board direction from there.
Any questions or comments before we invite?
Mr. Chair, did, Julie, I, I do have one question for you, please. Now, this is what I'm looking at, okay, is this one.
Cash analysis?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it's just technical, but I just wanted to explain to me, please. If you go onto the, I think, middle of the page...
The line numbers are on the side, yeah.
Line twenty-seven. Sometimes my eyes don't work so well. But for me, that two hundred and thirty thousand, I remember us making that motion and such, but wouldn't that have really been up under line fourteen, which is assigned HHS building? Wouldn't those have been combined?
The ones that you see in that upper section are the ones that were effective for the first of the year, and the changes that we made when we did, the other, anything that you've done prior, after January first are shown on lines twenty-four. It just made it a little bit easier for me to do it that way. Yeah, and to show it, and that was then taken out.
The total is right, that we took that out. I got that.
Yeah, that's, that's why I did it that way, so we could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My mind is getting older, and I do that for me.
Okay, any other questions for Julie at this point? If not, we have Black Hills Vision as one of the people that wants to address us.
My name, my name is Muchu Sarah. I am the current Chair of Black Hills Vision. And beside me, of course, is Bruce Rampleberg. He's our new Development Director. So we're here to really update you a little bit about Black Hills Vision and, and ask that you would consider your investment in Black Hills Vision. As you all know, back in 2005, there was this vision of bringing county, city, government, economic development agencies, and of course, businesses from across the West River region to do just one thing, and that is to grow the Black Hills region. In 2005, there were about five objectives that they were achieving with targets, from Technology Corridor Development, which is the science lab, Ellsworth Air Force Base, as you know, back then was under BRAC, and Vision was a big fund supporter as far as saving Ellsworth, which, as you know, that's very rare to do these times. Of course, we also had land and housing development, or at least low-income housing support. Other areas also include the incubator, which sits at the School of Mines, the Black Hills Business Development Center, and of course Sanford Lab, and Air Service Task Force. Those were objectives back in 2005, and I don't really want to dwell on 2005, but we were able to raise three million dollars with your help. And because of that, we achieved many things as far as positive growth in our Black Hills region. Well, as you know, back in 2010, we decided to move forward with that vision, because it is called Black Hills Vision for a reason. We're constantly looking forward. It's not a task force, it's not a project, it's a vision to continually grow the Black Hills region, from Balfour, all the way down to Edgemont, South Dakota, east to Wall, and of course, west to Spearfish, and so forth. Now, to do that, it requires partnerships, and it requires investment, and it is truly an investment. But what's rare about Black Hills Vision that I think sometimes we forget is the type of partnership that we're able to put together, and everyone seeing the same objectives and the same ideas. With the cities and counties and businesses, Black Hills Corporation, who I'm employed with, is a very large investor of Black Hills Vision, along with other utilities, Black Hills Power, West River Electric, Montana, Dakota Utilities, banks, institutions throughout the hills. We're really asking to continue this vision. Back in 2010, we were able to raise some funds, our goal was two million, not three. We raised about two point, one point two million so far, and we want to complete that vision as far as meeting the objectives. Bruce Rampleberg is going to talk about some of the things we've done just recently, along with bringing in a new leadership team, myself. I've been involved with Black Hills Vision since the entirety of the conception, along with Bruce, Mark Merchant, of course, thinking of the, just lost a...
Good old what's-his-name?
Oh, I forgot, anyway, I should not, never forget, the Chop House.
Mike Derby.
My, thank you, Mike Derby, I had a, had a little brain fart there, sorry about that. Anyway, can I say that on TV? Brain fart? I guess I already did.
A little difficult to get it off of there.
Anyway, but here's the bottom line. We have some major objectives we're still continuing, some have not stopped. Although we completed an incubator, we still have the science lab. They're moving towards education now, creating an education facilities in the science lab. We have the Ports to Plains Challenge. As far as, you know, we did the Heartland Express, you were all very much involved with that, and we thank you for that. But transportation is still a key issue for Black Hills Vision. Air Service Task Force is looking at additional flights from different organizations to, to bring those in. We also have the universities, and of course, South Dakota School of Mines, that have some great things moving forward as far as a competition that's going to be happening soon. And Bruce, again, will talk about that. But what's nice about Black Hills Vision is simple. By bringing us all together, we're able to create a grant or, or a foundation that organizations can come to us, seeking for funds for these large, what I call, economic impact engines. And that's what they are. We're not giving a hundred dollars to a small organization, we're talking thousands to organizations that have economic impact throughout the region, at least parts of the region, whether it be south, north, or central. And to do that, it takes investors, and that's really what we're asking today on behalf of the Board. Wanted to share the new leadership as well, not just myself as their new Chair. Dr. Charlie Hart is the Vice Chair, Regional Health Systems. We have Mayor Gary Lipp from Custer, he's our Secretary. We have Steve Konzit, President of Wells Fargo Bank, he's our Treasurer. Linda Raby is sitting here, she's on the Executive Committee at Large, as well as on the Board. We also have Chuck Turberville, our mayor from Deadwood, and Mayor Sam Quaker. These communities have invested in their part. And of course, we have a larger Board, a general at-large Board as well. But those are some of the things, and we're moving forward with the regional alliance, or the Rushmore Alliance, you may have heard about that. That is constantly a moving project that basically is funded by Black Hills Vision with the help of all of the economic development agencies through the Black Hills Business Council. And they've just done wonders, just wonders. We're, we're obviously reaching out to the Bakken, we're, we're going north, south, east, promoting new business attraction to come here, as well as retention and building our existing buildings and, and businesses. But Black Hills Vision helps do that, just that. If, if we didn't do that, you'd end up having, give you an example, let's say, Air Service Task Force, going to every city, county, and organization asking for five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, a hundred dollars, versus just coming to Black Hills Vision, which we represent you, and allowing them to give them a certain amount of funds, like we did the last time, to help meet the objective, and they've done an excellent job doing just that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce Rampleberg and let him finish our presentation.
Thank you much. When you look at the current situation today, we have, the past couple of years, I think things have kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. And what's happened right now is we have the opportunity to match some money from the Governor. We have the opportunity to really stretch out. When you, the Governor made a, he made a pitch this morning about workforce, job workforce, and he has a task force that's been working for the past year, and he basically challenged the region out here to come up with a plan that could be implemented to develop more workforce out here. And of course, when we talk about workforce, we're talking about education and training. We have a lot of people who are looking for jobs, but they don't have the background to qualify. So how do we go about doing that? And it was an interesting thing. He says he's got a million dollars... He says he's got a million dollars to pledge to, for matching money. So as we talk about how this region might get their arms around that, that's just one example. We also know that we have, the Governor has committed some money to match what we come up with for Ellsworth Task Force, to acquire the land out there, move those mobile homes, that kind of thing. They've got some plans for the northern part of the airport as well, of the airbase as well.
Just to make a correction, that's the Ellsworth Development Authority, not the Ellsworth Task Force.
Yeah, I have this mental, for some reason, I don't know.
Don't say it, I already did.
I know.
It's televised.
Anyway, if I were in your shoes, I'd say, what's the benefit to the county? And when you look at the accomplishments of the past 10 years, when you look at the potential, we've got five commitments right now that are all worthy, they're approved by the Board. As a Development Director, I won't have a vote, but Much and others on the Board will. I know that we have two that we're looking at right now, the total 375,000, both worthy projects. The Governor's challenge today, if we're going to match some of that million dollars he has, let's just say we get our share, a sixth of it, well, that's $150,000 about. Where would we, as a region, come up with $150,000? So when we take a look on down the road, if everybody, private businesses, government agencies, all kind of chip in and become a part of this big fundraising project, we have the opportunity to come up with these dollars without having to go around and spend a lot of time. And oftentimes, people don't get the benefit of some of the smaller ones that they will with the bigger ones. So my, our request today really is, please give some real serious consideration to, I know I look at your budget, I know it's tough, you know, it's interesting. I haven't got all of the information back, but we have counties right now that are talking about putting some money in that never have before. We are, have the same thing with some cities. We have some who haven't quite caught the vision yet. We have a little bit more to do. And we have a lot of local businesses who are in the process of putting their budget together that would be putting the vision into that budget as well. So somehow, as you folks finalize your budget, I would really appreciate your giving us some consideration. And then we've asked that you come up with the $10,000 because that gives you a spot on the Board. Right now, every organization that does that bogey has an automatic spot on our Board. And I know, Ken, you've been the representative over the years, and frankly, the last couple of years, we haven't done much, so there haven't been a reason to have meetings. But you guys all know me, we're going to be doing stuff, and we're going to be, we're going to be a factor that will be very important as we go forward as a region. So I would really ask you folks to seriously consider doing what you've done in the past, which is invest another $10,000 for 2015 in your budget. Any questions?
It'll be just for the one year that you're...
Yeah, we're just asking one year because we know where you're at, and we'll be back talking to you next year again. But again, we'll have, but guys, guess what?
It's a vision, Nancy.
We're going to have things to talk about, just like we do right now. If you have some questions, man, we could talk a lot about this, but we'll have more things next year. So yes, it's a one-year deal. Thank you.
And real quick, before, I just wanted to say, it is important to have Pennington County on the Board, and we want you to be part of that investment, as well as just seat at the table and share that vision. It's very important, as we seek other counties and cities to do just that, so.
Commissioner Holloway?
Speaking of other cities and counties, and you don't need to tell me which ones haven't committed yet, but do you have any commitments out of any of them that you have listed? I mean, you listed a bunch of cities and counties on the paperwork you have supplied to us with dollar amounts by them, and I'm just wondering if you got a commitment from any of them.
That's a good question, Don, or Commissioner Holloway. We have not received the final word. They're all voting now, this week, most of them, or later on in the month. We have made an initial approach, appeal, we will go back, I have gone back. I'm not sure how that's going to work, but I do know that from a leadership standpoint, just as you're asking, they ask as well. And you can imagine how it looks if I walk in there and say, well, Pennington Counties decided not to fund this at any level. It's kind of embarrassing, quite frankly. But I am working on those guys, and candidly, Don, I look at this as kind of a, I keep calling you Don, sorry, Commissioner. I look at this as a vision, as Much has said, it's a long-term deal. This is not a one-year deal. We have stuff, the Governor talked about, we finally got back to the jobs we had before the downturn, and we're adding to them. I mean, guys, South Dakota's on the bubble, we're going to go places, and the region out here is going to go there too, but it takes resources and leadership. And I think between Much and I and our Board, we're going to provide the leadership. Hopefully, we'll have one of you on that. And I'm here to make all this stuff happen as best I can. So I hope you don't get too hung up on that right now. I know we're going to get some from one of them. I haven't heard the final number, exactly how much that is, and I haven't got a final note from several of them either, so thank you for the question.
And we're very happy to know that our, the private sector is really stepping up very well, and Bruce has been reaching out along with the existing ones. But Commissioner, I do know Spearfish is already an investor, Rapid City is an investor, I believe, well, Custer is. I believe Hot Springs does have money in the budget for it. And Bruce is just, that's all he's been doing 24/7, you know, is just really hitting the street and basically reacquainting us and letting people know, we've been kind of quiet, and that's our fault, and we hope to make a little bit more noise in the future.
Uh-oh, they're bringing in the big guns now.
Linda Raby with the Rapid City Chamber. I just wanted to bring a little bit of a testimonial. We have a committee with the Chamber of Commerce called the Air Service Task Force, and we were very successful with the help of Black Hills Vision the first round. And we had an opportunity, these come up very quickly. Delta, we had sent out an RFP, and they were doing a matching grant for $500,000. It came up, you had to have Delta's blessing. It came up on a Friday, and we had to have it turned in very, very quickly, and we had to have 175,000 matching funds to be able to do it. And just like they alluded to earlier, rather than to go to all the different communities and try to gather up 175,000, we were able to go right to Black Hills Vision and say, we need 175,000 matching to even apply for the grant. And it was wonderful to have one entity to be able to go to, and that they could be that nimble to come back and say, yes, we will support that, go ahead and put in the grant. We've not heard if we've gotten the grant yet, but it's in the works. But this is a grant where Delta will increase their direct flights to Atlanta, and Atlanta is the major international hub, and that opens up the world to us. And so, it's a very, very important direct flight. And that is what some of the money is being used to. So there's lots of things that it can help throughout the region.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, Linda, I just ask a question. The Air Service Task Force and the money they spend, are those all open records to the public, that they can come in and view those?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
If they're available?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
And we have a question?
The only thing I've got to say about it is, I was gung-ho on this the first go-around. I'm a little hesitant this time around. I don't know just where we're headed with it, but I can tell you that it did a lot good the first time that we were into it. And the business people and things stepped up the first time around and put lots of money into it. I had the opportunity and the privilege to go around and give them their little trophy that they, they had distributed to all those business people, and it was very well-received the first time. So for $10,000, I'd have a little problem saying no, but I'm hesitant a little, but I hope you can do as good this time as you did the last time around.
And Commissioner, we do, we do have objectives right now that we're targeting, and I don't know if, Bruce may have mentioned this earlier, but you know, the five areas, again, is regional marketing. The Rushmore Region Alliance has just been great. We really reaching out to try it again, capture new businesses. Transportation, ports to planes is going to be an issue, you all know that. And that's in the northern side, but we need to, we need to connect that and create some kind of avenue for that, the oil and gas industry to come down south to enjoy our lifestyle. The energy is another infrastructure. Military, Ellsworth, we're not done. There's a lot of challenges with the Ellsworth Authority, Development Authority, and what's happening with that. We don't want to see that end up in a BRAC list again. And finally, you know, the business and technology. So yeah, Commissioner, I agree. I, you know, as a corporation, representing a corporation, we're always skeptic, we're very conservative, but again, we cannot see any other way of doing this and having the economic impact through, without having something like Black Hills Vision. You've got all those other social nonprofit organizations that do that. You have the United Way, you have Black Hills Community Foundation, Vicurvich Foundation. There is no economic development foundation of any kind that truly is targeted towards the Black Hills, and we're it. And that's what makes this a success.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I guess I was always livery about Black Hills Vision from the start, but I went to a few meetings with Ken when it started. I guess for $10,000, I would support that based upon the leadership that, so it's probably you two guys that are getting the $10,000, so if you come back next year, better have something to show for it.
I agree.
One thing I liked about it, the last time around, we asked for $10,000 for five years, a year for five years. And I know there was some governments that couldn't put that into their budget for five years, but this time, $10,000 for one year and come back again next year, well...
Well, Commissioner, we do have a five-year vision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to include Black Hills Vision into the 2015 budget for $10,000.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments or discussion?
I would just make a comment before we vote on this. You know, people talk about getting Pennington County to invest in the growth of our area. And one of the areas that we're continually overlooked at is the contribution that we make in lieu of not receiving taxes on all these TIFs. And Rapid City has more TIFs in Rapid City than all of the rest of the state combined. And Pennington County has not received taxes in, what is it, Julie, a couple million bucks a year? But yet, we have to provide the services. And I know people say, well, gee, you know, if we get all these new people to come in here, you wouldn't have, if we wouldn't have got them to come in, you wouldn't have had the tax base anyway. Well, we wouldn't have had all the problems associated with it either. And it's not to mean that when these new businesses come in, that the people that are moving here are problems, but they have car wrecks, they have civil lawsuits, they have, they get victimized by crime maybe, they drive on the roads. All of this becomes a county expense as well. So, you know, that's always been one of my, one of my reluctance to fund these kinds of programs, because we're already invested. The taxpayers of Pennington County has already invested a whole lot of money that we never, that nobody ever recognizes.
Any other comments?
I totally agree.
If not, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, Holly, do we have anyone else?
You should have the front porch coalition, and then you need to ask for any others.
Okay.
So...
What's up, didn't you?
I thought we didn't.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Stephanie Schweitzer Dixon, and I come to you again. Before I start, I want to look behind me to the crowd and apologize to anybody here who may have lost someone to suicide. I've never placed a dollar value on anybody's life before, but as I listen to what's been discussed here today, and as I look at the budget, and we have to discuss the dollars and cents, and we talk about taxes, and we talk about revenue, and we talk about expenses, I'm about to do that, and I apologize to anybody here who takes this a little too difficulty. It's really hard to talk about, but since I've been here, since the last time I've been here to talk to you, seven people have died by suicide in Pennington County, and that brings the total up to 15. When you take, let's say, an average of property taxes and put an economic value on the loss, because it's hard to do this, and it's hard to put a value on this, when someone dies, they stop contributing revenue. Let's say $1,000, that's $15,000 a year now for the rest of their lives. And these people are in their 20s, 30s, 40s. They've got another 30, 40, 50 years of contributing to our community. They do sell their homes, because usually these deaths happen in their home, and they sell their homes. And most of the time, since they're married with children, the economic toll that it takes on their family, they move, they downsize, move into an apartment, they live with family It's a loss to the county as far as property taxes. That home usually sits there for a while because it has to be identified as having a death in there, and how that death occurred in that home. Takes a long time to resell. I can't speak to the tax value, and I can't speak to what it's going to sell for, and if it loses value, but it usually does. In turn, those family members seek services from the county. They're very traumatized. They seek services from crisis care. They utilize dispatch services and law enforcement services when they are, not just at the time of this death, but if they in turn later have thoughts of suicide themselves, if they're in crisis, if they turn to drugs and alcohol, if they're not utilizing our services through law enforcement, sometimes domestic abuse. They utilize health and human services. Sometimes they utilize the services at the psychiatric hospital, which, again, comes back to health and human services, the high rate of involuntary mental health holds that the county pays for. I could go on and on, and I'm not going to go on and on. I went back to the average of $1,000 per person on an average amount of property taxes. You can see the high amount of what you've budgeted for the year on your social services for law enforcement and dispatch and all of those that I just talked about. It goes well over $1,000 that somebody's paid in taxes. I think I've made my point. And again, I apologize for being so abrupt about this and so very crude to the point, but as we head into another year, like we did have four years ago, where we recorded our highest number of deaths to suicide, like we did in 2010, we're getting to that point again.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You're requesting $10,000, is that what the request is?
I'm only requesting $10,000.
And we haven't provided any money to you in the past?
No.
Does the city of Rapid City provide any funds?
Yes, they do.
Do you know how much that is?
Last year, it was $2,500, and I intend to ask for additional because all but one of these 15 deaths has occurred in Rapid City.
And how about any, I know that you reach out to other jurisdictions as well, anything from any other jurisdiction?
Yes. This year, we received our first dollars from Sturgis.
Okay. And would you care to share how much that would be?
This year, it was $1,000.
$1,000, okay. So most of your funds that you operate on are from, you get some from the United Way, and then some other grants, is that it?
Yes. A significant portion is grants from private foundations. The local community, primarily Rapid City, but Sturgis, some from the Northern Hills. Corporations, businesses have significantly increased their donations to our community. The impact that this has had on businesses, people who are unable to return to work, and when they return to work, businesses see the impact... when they return to work, businesses see the impact it has on their employees. They have in turn really supported us over the years. People aren't able to return back to work as, you know, they would normally do so.
And most of your... I mean, most of your workers are volunteers?
Yes, they are.
So your paid staff is...
Just me.
Just you?
Mm-hmm. We're very small. We're trying to grow, but it's hard.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, pardon me if you've went through this before, but do you concentrate on just the aftermath of a suicide, or is there some education program to prevent suicide?
We do both. We concentrate on the aftermath, which research has shown, and we have the research to show, it reduces the amount of time and the need for being placed in the hospital, going to crisis care, all of those things. It does reduce the amount of impact on social service systems and what somebody goes through afterwards. We do a significant amount of education in the community to prevent this, to help somebody, reach out and help somebody else. So we educate our mental health providers, our first responders.
Suppose it's difficult, and I don't know, but I don't imagine you can get into the schools, have a program, or can you?
We do. Yes, we do.
Well, rest of the board, I wouldn't mind giving them some money. I don't know how much. I think suicide is horrible, and I tell you, you read about it every day in the paper. And I, you know, if we've got some organization that can do something to help prevent some of it, I would be in favor of it, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. Again, our office works very closely with Stephanie and the loss team. In particular, if there's a suicide, whether it's in the city or the county, as a coroner's office, we respond to all of those. So we work hand in hand with them all the time. I think it's a worthwhile project, if you will, it's worthwhile, putting some level of funding towards it, whatever dollar amount you decide. But we would support their request in terms of looking to the county for some support. We use their services all the time, and they have a lot of volunteers, so they run on a kind of a shoestring budget. They're not spending a lot of money in a wasteful way. They're very diligent with their dollars, so would support their request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to... It might sound crazy, but I'll make a motion to reduce our contingency budget by $5,000 and put this organization in for $5,000. That way, we don't increase the budget.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further questions or comments?
The only way we could have done that was we could have taken it out of the sheriff's budget.
Or Julie's.
Well, just as a matter of...
Let's just take a thousand apiece. Let's take one, two, three.
Of discussion as far as the funding part of it. Julie, you talked about the public utilities. There would be an increase in that, right?
Yes, we do have some growth dollars in that that would easily support, frankly, both of these. That would be the direction when you approve your budget, whether you want us to leave our tax revenues at the 28, 705, and the rest would come out of additional cash reserves. $15,000, $20,000 is not going to affect your reserves, which are estimated at over your 18% goal anyway.
Mr. Chairman, Holly, what's our balance in contingency? Do you have any idea? We usually don't spend all of that. I mean, it's contingencies, so emergency can happen this afternoon that we might use it all, but normally, speaking, we don't use it.
That makes it easiest. I was just curious about that.
If I may clarify, did you mean this year?
Next year, 2015.
So instead of having 100...
100, we'll have 95, okay.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You got some.
Okay, we're... Item 17, executive session.
We got to do...
You have to approve the 2015...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, yep.
Or anybody else.
No, 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 no.
If there's anybody else out there.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Got any that I can get to?
Yep. I may. If the board is ready to approve the provisional into the annual for 2015, the... I have a resolution which basically says, whereas SDCL 725-5 through 13 inclusive requires the Board of County Commissioners to prepare a budget for the next calendar year of all estimated expenditures and revenues for the departments of the county. And whereas a provisional budget was prepared, approved, and published with a legal notice to the public of the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for the consideration of such budget, and all changes have now been made. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the provisional budget, as amended, shall be approved as the annual budget of appropriations, expenditures, and revenues for Pennington County for calendar year January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015. The annual budget so approved is available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Office of County Auditor, Julia Pearson, 315 St. Joseph, Rapid City, South Dakota. I have this to sign for the board. I would appreciate a for and against as your vote tallies. And also, for the publics, we will post our budget file on the county's website. If you're ready to approve today, that adjusted budget would be $86,268,469. I will leave tax revenues at the 28, at the total for the entire budget as listed in that, except for library, which I will fund to the full tax available using additional growth and all of our CPIs, as was the board's previous motion. And basically, the cash reserves will change, as will the 5% factor in general fund. I will update the values on the bottom or the second page of your means of finance with the final values through OHE with utilities and new growth from those, and re-present that or redeliver that to the board through the email, and that's the one I will put on the webpage. If you are done with that and feel comfortable, if you want to see it in a final document, I can bring it back the next board meeting. But that basically is it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So if I read this right, and it might change a little bit with what we did today, but I suspect not very much, our levy projections have went down .269 from last year. Is that correct? For, at least for the county?
For county consolidated, you went down...
Five percent.
Yeah, 5.16%. And since you're leaving the tax dollars as they are, that and applying the increase in utility value and growth, that will change slightly, but it will go down.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
But the taxpayer will only see this 5.16 reduction in taxes. They'll only see that if the city doesn't increase.
This is only the reduction in the county portion of their budget.
Right.
If their value stayed exactly the same.
Yeah, but if the city and the school raises theirs, then the taxpayer's not going to see the difference.
They're going to see the difference.
They would, from the county's perspective.
Yes. And actually, the city, the... Excuse me, the school levies approved by the state legislature are reduced. They reduce them every year, the maximums.
Julie, on this, on this sheet here, over in the far right-hand, opt-out for the library, is that... That's not a new... That was the opt-out from...
That is not a new opt-out. That's the one that, I don't know...
Approved several years ago.
Many years ago. It was approved under the statutes that we did not have to limit it to a number of years. It's a forever. They have changed that law. Now, you have to state in any opt-out how long you want that opt-out to be good for.
Okay. Thank you.
The growth in utilities, I will update that library fund cash flow and send it to Holly, is not going to help that fund even with this change to another year, I don't believe.
What you wish.
I think that we should just go ahead and finish it up today.
The motion I would like is approval of the resolution, which I apologize, I didn't get to you earlier to be in the packets, would approve the budget at $86,268,469, limiting the tax revenues as listed on there, except for applying the additional growth to the library fund.
So Mr. Chair, that would be my motion, is to approve that resolution.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Say yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, maybe this is appropriate. I do appreciate all of the departments really working hard to keep the costs down and to find ways to efficiently use the taxpayers' money, and it's not an easy job. And again, they came through for us this year.
And I also think it should be noted for everyone that Pennington County did not use $1.7 million that it could have levied for and has reduced the... For county consolidated, which is county general accumulated building, county fairgrounds, and emergency disaster, as well as a reduction of almost $70,000 in the county fire fund.
Okay, any other comments? Not? We have a motion in a second. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and I will pass around the sign-up sheet that records your vote.
And if you'll just give that to Karen, I'll pick it up from her. Thank you very much.
Okay, we now have completed the budget, and we're ready for item 17, which is executive session.
Make a motion, go into executive session in 10 minutes.
Second.
You're going to make the motion in 10 minutes?
You said that the last time, and you didn't laugh then either.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion in a second. Davis and Buskerud to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are out of executive session, and we're on item...
I would like to make a motion to consider recession of the August 5, 2014 motion of the board denying the abatement application to Mr. Wenderson.
That's item 18. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Yep. Good answer. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Jay Aldrin with State's Attorney's Office. I just want... I didn't entirely hear that, Commissioner Buskerud. Was it a motion to rescind?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's not what I said, that's what I meant.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I think I'd like to make a motion to grant the original application for the abatement as presented at the August 5, 2014 meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Motion in a second to grant the abatement. Any discussion or comments?
Mr. Chair, just a comment. I'm going to... I'm reluctantly going to support that motion. I think the administrative rules of the Department of Revenue need to be addressed by state statute to clean them up. I don't know that we would get any support of that, but the fact that people can have owner-occupied status on adjoining property just because they want to have a 50-acre lot as a home site and have more than one parcel in that 50 acres that their house is not sitting on is not a fair taxation.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that, and I made the motion, and I'll have reluctantly vote for it, but I think the administrative rule went way over and above what the statute says, and I don't think that committees in Pierce should have that power to change what the laws that the legislature has passed, which I think, in this case, they've changed the law.
Mr. Chair, and I'd have to agree that non-elected officials are making the law in Pierce, not elected officials. I totally, totally agree with that.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Sorry, I jumped ahead on you there. I jumped ahead of you there. Sorry about that. I see it's 18, not 15.
Okay, we're on item 19, and did everyone sign that budget sheet? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tom Welsey from County Highway. Item 19A is authorization sign-off system roads. By state statute, I'm not... I am supposed to ask your permission to put signs up and such do work off of the county system. And what this is, is 911 signs or street signs that were put up in 1994 as per board action have deteriorated to the point that at night, some of them are just not visible until you're right on top of them. What we are wanting to do is update these signs to current MUTCD standards. I gave you a list of several signs that are included in this list that we have on our inventory. We figure there are more out there that we don't know about. Current standards are nine-inch letters and high visibility with retro reflectivity. I'm requesting a motion for you to authorize the Highway Department to expend the county monies outside of our system to upgrade these signs.
You've got that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second.
And just as a comment, the 911 bought the County Highway Department a sign-making machine...
Yep.
...at the time to put these signs together, so...
In the initial setup of them, yes.
Is that sign-making machine still working?
You know, I'm not sure, but I know they've got one that's working out there...
Okay.
Because it's pretty noisy.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, it's just... I see some of these signs have PRIV. I take it that's a private road?
It's a private intersection, yes.
And so it's not a county road?
Not a county road.
Then I'm not so sure we have the authority to spend county taxpayer money on private roads.
Do we have the authority to spend on Forest Service roads, too? Because those are also FS.
I have no idea. That's a public road. That's a different story. I would surely like to get an opinion first.
When we're talking about private intersection, are we talking about one side of the intersection and the other, and the road going through the county?
No, because we already maintain those.
Okay, so then it's just private, private.
Private, private for the most part.
But they're public...
There are some that are private signs off of a public road, which might be a state road or a Forest Service road.
But they're public access roads.
Public access.
Not necessarily. If they're private roads, they don't have to let the public on them.
There are right-of-way's that people go down.
Oh.
Any further comments?
Where'd Jay go?
Well, if it wasn't le... If it's not legal now, it wasn't legal 20 years ago when we did it.
I don't know if... Did we put them up 20 years ago?
Yes, we did.
We usually... I think we usually would...
The list I gave you are signs that were installed 20 years ago.
We probably did it wrong then.
When they put the new 911 deal, they started working on that.
I thought people had put their own signs up.
Not when the 911 deal came about, but new construction they did.
Yeah, now we make them in the building, you know, if a builder's putting up a subdivision, then we make him put the signs up. But at the time, when we put all these up, County Highway Department did it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like a roll call vote, because when we spend public funds on private places, the county commissioners may be personally held liable, and I don't want to be held liable for them. want to be held liable for them.
You take that from the auto...
How does he determine private when it's coming off public?
They're public access roads. They're not on the counties.
Any further discussion? Yes.
When you list this, these roads as a private road, they're roads that are not maintained by the county.
Correct.
They may be a public access road that is dedicated, it's a dedicated road on that parcel of ground dedicated to public access, but it's just not being maintained by the county.
Not maintained by the county. Most of these roads are access to multiple houses.
And they're not, are they being, is those roads being taxed as a private property?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
I don't think it, I don't think it is, because it's a dedicated roadway. So I'm not concerned about having been partially liable for four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Roughly five thousand dollars.
Divisible by four, much just as easy as by five.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Tom, excuse me. When you were going down that list, and you're saying private, you're actually looking at the deeds or the plats to say these roads are private, or are these roads, roads that the county does not maintain, but they're still county road right-ofways?
I couldn't answer that completely. I know the way that we have them designated is by private road, because we don't maintain them, Forest Service doesn't maintain them, so they're privately maintained.
Yeah, but my road that goes on the west side of my house is owned by the county, or is a county road right-ofway, open to the public, but you do not, the county did not maintain that road. And the road on the east side of my house is the same thing, but we made that into a road district. But the county has never maintained either one of those, but they were county road right-ofways. So I'm wondering...
I can't answer, because I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? This list of roads, is that from the original signing?
These are ones that we have on our inventory from the signing, yes. This list that I gave you. As I said, there are probably others out there that we don't know about.
Sure. Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second roll call vote. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson? Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Item B.
Item B. Pursuant to your authorization, we had a letting for three snowplows, snow wings, and stainless steel sanders. We received bids from two companies, Northern Truck Equipment of Rapid City and Sanitation Products of Sioux Falls. Sanitation Products of Sioux Falls submitted the lowest bid to the amount of a hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. There were two variants from our specifications. Highway Sanders do not offer bolted-in-end panels, which are, we requested because of accidents. It's much easier to repair rather than welding it. And Heineken plows do not make six-foot wings. They only bid an eight-foot wing instead of the six-foot wing, as we were gonna request. We figured we can mount them so that we can make it work for that road. So for us, these variances are acceptable. We recommend a motion to award the purchase of the three, of three new twelve-foot snowplows, four new eight-foot snow wings, three new hundred-and-eighty-inch stainless steel sanders, and five new hundred-and-forty-four-inch stainless steel sanders to Sanitation Products of Sioux Falls to the amount of hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Halliwell?
Did you bid this as just one, one package, either, so you couldn't piecemeal these pieces?
The way it was written was a one deal, one package.
Because I see the, it looks like the three new eight-foot snow wings were less expensive with Northern Truck Equipment. And likewise, the one new six-foot snow wing was less expensive.
Yes, it was. I bid them as a package. It's easy.
Much public-plated roads through, intersecting with these so-called...
Much easier and better to deal with one person, one entity, just to, for delivery purposes. We already have the trucks. These are going on three trucks, and while the five-hundred-and-forty-four-inch stainless steel are going, being built separately. To be able to schedule everything, it worked better this way.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Is it in your budget? For the public, right? Okay.
We've got it covered.
Say something.
Were you trying to make a motion?
There you go. Now I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item twenty. We have a letter here.
I'll make this short and sweet. I'll make a motion to approve Denise Livingston's continued involvement in Spring Creek Advisory Committee as Representative RCAC.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask a question, and I'm trying to find her, and the lady that wrote that letter to us, where's she from? What was her name? Helen or Ellen or...
Ellen Drew.
Yeah.
Ellen Drew is, excuse me, I'm Denise Livingston with Rural Community Assistance Corporation. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Ellen Drew is my field manager. She is out of New Mexico.
Is she a Forest Service government employee, or what is she?
No, Rural Community Assistance Corporation is a nonprofit entity that's dedicated to helping small rural communities. And we represent the, pretty much the whole western part of the country.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item twenty-one, we need a motion.
Make a motion and go into Board of Adjustment.
Second. Motion and a second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, before, PJ Conover, Interim Director, Planning Department. Variance fourteen twenty-two is a request to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to five-point-six-two-five acres in a general ag district. The applicant is James and Julie Smorgowitz, the owner Terry and Marcy Graver, and currently the physical characteristics of the land are forested and hilly. This item came before you on July fifteenth, and you approved through variance fourteen twenty-one to allow the Smorgowitz a lot size variance for three-point-seven-five acres. This is a lot that you previously approved. When they envisioned what they wanted to do with this lot, they were going off the lines on rapid map, which are just a guide, and they're not accurate, or survey quality. They did have a surveyor go out to the property, resurvey for them, and they realized that it wasn't going to be adequate. So what they're asking is for a one-point-eight-seven-five increase to five-point-six-two-five acres, and if you can go one slide ahead, for this particular parcel right now. The five-point-six-two-five acre lot would be adjacent to ten acres of land, zone general ag, which is currently owned by Terry and Marcy Graver, but soon to be purchased by the Smorgewitzes. And on May twelfth, the Planning Commission approved recreational resort on that property with twenty-six conditions. With the, with this new lot size variance, it actually went through the departmental review twice, and both times no significant issues were brought up. And they do have an option of rezoning the property to low-density residential, which requires a three-acre minimum. However, this would create a spot zoning in that area, as the closest low-density residential lot is two miles away. And within one mile of this property, there are over twenty lots, zone general ag, which range between one and twenty-three acres. And if variance fourteen twenty-two is approved for the increase by the Board of Adjustment, staff does not recommend any conditions of approval.
Any questions? Comments?
Make a motion to approve the variance as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve variance fourteen twenty-two as presented. Any further discussion? Anyone have any comments? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We...
Make a motion to come out of the Board of Adjustment.
Motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the planning and zoning consent agenda.
At this time, staff is recommending if we could add item I from the regular agenda to the consent, as it's only being continued, request to be continued to the October seventh Board of Commission meeting. It is the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment fourteen oh four. We're asking, we need to re-advertise it.
So how would the motion be? How would the motion be? Would you just say?
Just include it.
You probably need to read the consent.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the board, of a board member or a citizen. And the consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, second reading of ordinance amendment zero, I'm sorry, fourteen oh six from Pennington County to amend sections one oh three, two oh four I five, two oh eight D one A, two oh eight D one B, two oh eight E three, two ten D one A, two ten D one B, two eleven E one A, two eleven E one B, two thirteen C four G, three oh four C one, three oh five A three, three oh five D two, three oh six B, three oh six B thirteen, three oh six B fourteen, and three oh seven B one of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And we're asking to replace the word health department with planning department, and approval is recommended. Item C is the second reading of ordinance amendment fourteen oh five from Pennington County to amend section three fourteen B two of section three fourteen C two, a temporary, temporary campgrounds and assemblies of people of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, to replace the words environmental health officer with the words environmental planner and/or water protection coordinator, and approval is recommended. First reading and public hearing of rezoning fourteen oh six for Mick Harris, Davis Engineering, as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item E, the first reading and public hearing of rezone fourteen oh seven from Pacific Lone Pool LLC with Davis Engineering as the agent, and approval is recommended. And we're asking to add item I, the first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment fourteen oh four from Pennington County to amend section three nineteen C five, the vacation rental of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. We're asking that that be continued to October seventh, two thousand fourteen Board of Commission meetings, that we can re-advertise, since we're going to affect more than just section C five.
Okay, are we on track here as far as moving item I into the consent agenda? Do we need a separate motion to do that?
I would think so. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would move to accept the planning and zoning consent agenda with the addition of item I. And item I would have additional wording connected.
Considerable, yes.
Which would be, and that's in your motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item F.
Item F is minor plat fourteen eighteen and subdivision regulation variance fourteen oh six to create lots A and B of ewing addition and to waive plating requirements. The applicant is R. William and Nancy Ewing with the agent Davis Engineering. Currently, the existing land use is vacant. The applicant, Bill Ewing, has submitted a minor plat request to create lots A and B of the ewing subdivision, sorry, ewing addition by subdividing existing lot G into two lots. Proposed lot A is to measure one-point-three-four acres with proposed lot B to measure point-eight-four acres. The purpose is to split, of the split is to create two buildable lots for residential use. In addition, the applicant is requesting a subdivision regulation variance to waive road improvements for Forest Road, dedication of additional right-of-way, road improvements for access easements through lot B, providing access to lot B, dedication of additional easements with for the access easement from lot A to B, and engineering road construction plans. A layout plat to create lots A and B of this addition was previously approved by this board on May sixth, two thousand and fourteen. This item came before you before, and there was some confusion as to the motions that were made by the Planning Commission. Since that time, staff has talked with Planning Commission and believes that we have the, we can revise the intent of what they're asking to do. And I'll just read that emotion verbatim. It's one long motion, but I actually want to, requesting two motions in the one. First motion, we're recommending is to deny a portion of subdivision regulation variance fourteen oh six to waive the dedication of additional right-of-way for Forest Road and road improvements to the access easement, and approval of a portion of the subdivision regulation variance fourteen oh six to waive engineering road construction plans for all required road improvements. Also, to waive road improvements to Forest Road and to waive the dedication of additional easement width for the access easement across lot A, which provides access to lot B. That'd be the first motion. It's a long one. So we're splitting it.
That made it a lot clearer.
Things you've done before.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Did, there was some discussion about that. Did we find out that the contract for deed had been paid off on this, and the people are actually the owners?
From what I understand, talking with Mr. Davis, that that has been done, but the paperwork has not been filed. If the paperwork is not filed when the minor plat comes in, I've talked with Register of Deed this morning, Donna, and she said that they could easily put the current owners and future owners on the plat, or if the paperwork is filed, it'd just be one signature, which would be the Ewing's, if they were the new owners at the time. And the agent is here in the office, in the room, if you'd like to ask him. That's my understanding.
Any other questions or comments?
You know, I know you ran through this, but I'm a little confused after you, after you said, "We're approving and denying, and denying and approving." And so if you could maybe break it down into one denial and one approval at a time, what, we're gonna approve the...
We're recommending that you deny the subdivision regulation variance, because it goes against our ordinance, so we have to recommend denial. And approval of a portion of the subreg variance to waive engineering and construction plans for all required road improvements. That's the second part of the paragraph. It's a long one.
But, but if we, if we take your recommendation to deny, then there's no reason to approve the second portion of it.
Right. And you cannot deny it. But we have, that's what we have to present.
Any other questions?
So, so we don't want to, we don't want to, we want to allow this guy to, to subdivide so that they can build two...
That's what we're trying to do, yes.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yes.
But, but we have to, we have to deny his request on the road improvements? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
That's what our recommendation is, because it goes against the ordinance in that spot.
And what do you think of that, Mr. Davis?
Well, he's got it worded right. It is really confusing. It's been since we started this, and I don't know how it got here, actually, but we are, what we're asking for is a sub-
Identify yourself.
Oh, Ron Davis, Davis Engineering, I'm sorry. We started out asking for a subdivision regulation variance, to waive the requirements to, to build the roads any wider and, 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 and the access road to A and B, and then we ended up, that we need additional right-of-way. And we agreed to that, that's no problem, but that was included in the motion that we denied, and so we didn't want to do that. So this has been reworded so that you're, you're waiving the dedication of additional right-of-way, you're denying that, so that means we have to dedicate additional right-of-way. That's what that says. And the road improvements to the access easement, so that means we have to improve, pave the access easement into lot B. Okay? And then approve all the rest of, of the regulations variance, waiving the engineered construction plans because you're going to waive the requirement to widen the roads, waive the improvements to Forest Road, to waive dedication of additional easement width for the access easement across lot A and B, because you're requiring 66 feet and it's a private driveway to one house, so we're, we're going with 40 feet. And then also, well, you haven't done the minor plat yet, so, so that's kind of what we're doing. We, somebody grouped it all into a big motion, and we ended up almost getting it approved and not have to give you any more access or right-of-way, so, but we do want to dedicate the additional right-of-way. That's kind of what that's all about. If that still isn't clear, I'm sure, but it's-
That's well put.
It's kind of where we're at.
Well put.
Any other questions or comments?
PJ or Ron, where's water supply going to come from on this lot, or these lots?
They're drilling a well.
Are you going to have one well or two wells?
One well for both lots.
One well supply both lots?
One where?
Okay, is there room enough on them to separate them from the septic systems-
Yes.
-and drain field? And they are far enough away from Rapid Creek that they're not going to be any problem?
Yes.
And where's the well going to be, or do you have that set up yet, where the well will be?
The well's going to be right about here. There's an access easement that goes across here to this lot. That'll be 40 feet wide, and the well's going to be right adjacent to that.
So then the septic tanks are going to be back towards the creek?
Septic tanks are up here in this corner for this lot, and for this one, it's a little access easement here, it's right in this area.
150 feet from the well?
Yeah. Yeah, there's 150 feet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'd make the motion, I'm just not 100% sure I'd have worded it.
Just like he said.
As presented.
PJ, I'll give you the word. You already said it a couple times.
Right.
That's your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second, the second request is we recommend approval of minor plat 1418 with the nine conditions that are listed. However, I believe the agent has a request on item nine.
I don't know if you've read them all, but we, we agree with all of the conditions, except on item nine, that's that private access easement over to that one house. And somewhere along the line, I missed the fact that we approved it at 22-foot wide pavement. And it just goes to one house over there, and so what we'd like to request is to change that to 12 feet if we could.
12 feet of paved.
12 feet of paved surface, yes.
PJ, how is that consistent with?
We usually do ask about 16 to 18 feet, that would be consistent.
Pardon?
16 to 18.
It would stay 40 feet wide.
40-foot easement. And, and I think his 16 to 18 feet is usually when you're going into four, five, six lots. There's more traffic on it. These are two homes, two individuals in and out. I mean, and it's laid out in a way that if somebody comes out of one house and somebody's coming in, they can go, wait a second, let them go in and leave. So it's, it's basically a private driveway, well, a driveway to lot B.
Because 12 feet, I mean, if you're, you're accessing, it's a driveway, in essence, a driveway going into access to, to residences, not one.
Right.
If it was just going back to one, then I might, I might agree with you with the 12-foot, but this, this is going to be coming off of whatever that road is.
Forest, forest.
Forest Road. And, and I guess, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to see it go less than 16, I don't think.
If that's what you require, we'll just do it that way. I mean, 12, I think 12 is adequate, since there's only two residences and they can wait for each other, it's not like it's a major thoroughfare. But if you require 16 feet, that's what we'll do.
That's your motion?
So that we, so we would need a motion then to amend recommendation number nine to 16 feet instead of 22.
That's what you like.
That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to amend. Does your motion include adoption or, or not?
Did we already adopt all of this, though, in the prior motion?
Not the minor plat, this is separate.
Your motion should be to approve the minor plat with the change to item nine.
Yes, that would be my motion, and with the change to number nine is 16 instead of 22.
We do have a motion and a second then. You okay, Karen? Okay. Any other discussion relative to the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item G.
Item G is layout plat 1417 to create lots A, B, and C of Russ Frink addition. Applicant and owners Josiah Frink and Pamela Frink with the surveyor Davis Engineering, and the current use is residential and agriculture. The applicant, Josiah Frink, has submitted a layout plat requesting to create three lots, A, B, and C of Russ Frink addition for an exist, from an existing 59.6 acre parcel. Lot A is to measure 8.5 acres, the proposed lot B, 14.84 acres, and proposed lot C, the remainder 33.95 acres. The purpose of the subdivision is to allow for the owner of the property to sell the individual lots. On August 19th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this layout plat with 10 conditions. The subject property currently contains a single-family residence and several outbuildings, primarily on lot A, if you could bring that up. There is considerable amount of large metal items still on the property, which the applicants are in the process of cleaning up. The remainder of the property is currently vacant. Access to the property is provided by Mystic Road, and there's an existing access on Mystic Road to lot A. There are currently no existing accesses to lot B and C, and if access is desired, which I'm sure it will in the future, they'd need to apply for an approach permit through county highway department. The applicant is responsible for deducting the road improvements prior to the minor plat approval, posting a surety or bond for the road improvements, or the applicant may apply for a subdivision regulation variance to request to waive the required road improvements, which are subject to county board approval, which you'll hear after this report. There is 100-year floodplain on the property located in the northern portion. The majority of the structures on the property appear to be outside the floodplain, but the single-family residence on the property does appear to be in the boundary. If any construction is to be done within the floodplain, a floodplain development permit would be required, and the 100-year floodplain boundaries must be drawn, and we're asking the floodplain boundaries be drawn on the plat in accordance with FEMA regulations. This item was put through the interdepartmental review process, and no significant issues were raised, and staff recommends approval of layout plat 1417 with eight conditions. This will come before you again as a minor plat.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, is that the one you're doing?
G, G, G is eight.
That's it. I have something different that you have.
You must have. That might be something different.
Yeah, I don't know. Have difference here, a second.
Paperwork he has has 10 conditions. Ours is eight.
Here's the eight.
There's eight, right there, yep.
Okay, let me look through them real quick. That's good. Just had the wrong form.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the layout plat with eight conditions.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve layout plat 1417. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, item I has been placed on the consent agenda.
We have item, we have one more, sir.
H?
H, sir.
H. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed H, yeah. Okay, proceed with item H.
Item H is a rezone 1405 and comprehensive plan amendment 1405. This has to do with the property we just spoke, spoke of. The request is to rezone 59.6 acres from General Agriculture District to Limited Ag District, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to limited agricultural district. The applicants are Josiah Frink and Pamela Frink with the agent Davis Engineering. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from general ag to limited ag. In addition, the applicant is requesting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change from planned unit development sensitive to limited ag. The purpose of the request is to allow the subject property to be subdivided into three lots, lots A, B, and C, as we spoke of before. Now, the subject property is surrounded by properties, zone general agriculture district and limited ag. The former, the general ag, ranged in size from nine to 29 acres, while the latter, the limited ag, ranged in size from four to 25 acres. It's also bordered by 480 acres of forest service land, and there are two, there are two lots adjacent to the property, which were rezoned to limited ag in 1996 and 1981. The Comprehensive Plan shows the future land use, as I said, as planned unit development sensitive, and staff feels that amending the designation of the future land use to limited ag, in this case, is appropriate, as the proposed zoning is consistent with the nearby zoning districts and would allow the use, the uses that appear compatible with the existing and surrounding parcels. The Comprehensive Plan and the rezone requests were routed through the interdepartmental review with no significant issues being raised, and staff recommends approval of rezone 1405 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1405.
It's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item H. Any discussion? Hearing none, those, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, now we're down to item J.
Good afternoon, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. What I have in front of you is the segment three, Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan proposal. In order to be eligible for additional 319 grant funds for the 2015-2017 project years, another plan for segment three needs to be submitted to DENR for consideration at their December task force meeting. So I have attached the plan. This segment is basically focused on BMP implementation. There's no monitoring in this plan this time. Basically, it's continuing with riparian and stormwater improvements, and then some onsite wastewater improvements, and one RV dump station improvement in the watershed. If you look in the, in the plan, there is some information in there that wasn't previously in some of the other plans. On, starting on page 10, it has all the water quality results and the percentage of time exceeding. When DENR looks at these impairments, they look at basically anything that exceeds more than 10% of the time. So if you look through the years, it kind of gives you an idea. It also designates Palmer Gulch Creek as a main tributary because of the amount of loading that it provides to the creek, so we are prioritizing that tributary in this document. Another thing that's new in there is our stormwater management plan. As part of that stormwater plan, they had identified basins where they think that the BMPs would be best utilized for reductions. And then they also, as part of the onsite wastewater management plan, they had identified priority areas. So moving forward in this plan, we will implement BMPs in those priority areas. Let's see if there was anything new, anything else. So on page 26 is the cash flow. So what we are requesting is $215,000 in 319 funds. The participant is basically the producers or the landowners. I have spoken to Hill City, they know about the project, and we would work with them with the stormwater BMP, so that wouldn't be like cash funds, that would be working, implementing a BMP within their city limits. The Hill City School District, they did make a motion at a meeting, I want to say about a month ago, about doing some stormwater improvements on their property. And then Pennington County, that would be our, my time, and then the budgeted 10,000 that I have in the water protection budget. So if you have any other questions? This is just a submittal. The submittal deadline to the state is October 1st, so there's no guarantee for funds, there's no guarantee that this would be the amount we get approved for, so this is just a proposal at this time to them.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the monitoring. I mean, how do we know that we are actually improving the quality if we're not going to monitor?
Well, I had discussed this with DENR quite a bit. We've got a good, good background through a lot of flow regimes for monitoring, so what we would like to do is get some BMPs on the ground and then revisit monitoring, maybe in the next segment to, to see, because we have a good data set, we feel, right now. So getting some BMPs on the ground, implementation is our, going to be our focus in this segment.
And, and I guess part of that, of my concern on that was that, because we were monitoring, we caught the unhealthy situation there, just by Hill City and the Spring Creek area, and so we won't be able to do that now.
No, but the state does monitor right above Sheridan Lake, so that will continue through the DENR program, so we, I mean, we still have access to that information to see and compare it with what we have from previous.
All right.
Any other questions, comments? Does anyone else have any comments? If not, do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners accept the attached Spring Creek Watershed and Implementation Project Segment Three and submit it to the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources for consideration in the 2015 Project 319 funding year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments from anyone? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's see, we're down to items from the chair, and I don't have any. So, committee reports.
I'll pass.
I haven't had any committee meetings, so I'll have.
Likewise.
Mr. Chair, I, I have been kind of pursuing library contracts for the upcoming year, meeting with some of them, talking about possibilities of future funding. As we move towards the decrease of the available funding for libraries, I think it's really important that they understand our, our financial constraints. I feel we've got a good dialogue going. I'll just keep you updated as we go.
Thank you. Okay, items from the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission?
Make motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second.
For personnel, yes.
Motion in a second to go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Can't believe we weren't told what to do. Come out of executive session.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any other motions?
I quit. I mean, I adjourned.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Yes.
We are adjourned.